Good morning. The Beaufort County Board of Education, day two of work session is now back in open session and called back to order on August 17, 2019. We have unfinished business from yesterday regarding a letter that was going to be drafted for the board to review, and everyone has a copy at their seat. And Mr. Guy, I'll turn it over to you.
So you have a copy?
Yes, go ahead.
And just answering questions.
Just a question before we begin today's agenda. Is there a possibility that we could possibly switch items four and five around? Only because I think the board policy discussion may take a bit longer than the latter, and if somebody has to exit early due to commitments, would that be considered by Madam Chair?
So I don't see any numbers here, so what are you referring to?
I'm sorry, I'm in Board Doc's, bear with me here. So item four is the discussion on length of board meetings and future topics added to board agendas. Item five is review of board policies. Is there any way we could just flip them?
Well, yesterday, the agenda was approved for the work session, so now it would require a two-thirds vote to switch the agenda, so.
Well, you, as Chair, you have the authority to change the order of the agenda, so we're not adding or removing anything.
Right, but I don't know.
That's fine, that's fine, Dr. Ch.
Well, let me answer you. The problem is, I don't know if other people have other issues, you know, with their time commitment, so I would leave the order as is unless the board would like to take a vote. Mr. Dowling.
Take a vote? Because policy, this has nothing to do with the posted agenda. It's a board policy. The board can change, the Chair can change the order in which agenda items are taken.
Okay. So make a motion.
I made the agenda, the order of the agenda be altered to show review of board policies prior to discussion on length of board meetings and future topics added to board agendas.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? And all abstained? Motion carries for the order to be switched. So now, Mr. Guyer.
So you have had a copy of the letter, are there any comments, additions, issues that we should do? And because what we, the idea is to give this to Ms. Crosby, have it put in final, and have the Chair sign it today, so we can bring it to the Finance Committee meeting of the County Council at 4:00 on Monday.
I submitted some corrections, and can you tell me how that's been changed?
Yes, if you look on the second paragraph, the county ad valorem tax revenue shortfall has now totaled approximately, the number was wrong in the draft, the correct number is $18,969,820. I can say that again.
Sir, repeat it.
The total should read $18,969,820.
And then you made the correction at the very end under strike "School District" and put in "Board of Education" under my signature? Yeah, those are the two things I brought forward.
Got it.
Mr. Dowling.
Madam Chair, before the discussion commences on this, I think a motion would be in order for the board to approve the letter. Then we can discuss it.
That would be fine. I, how should I say this? Corrections or whatever were asked by the people that drafted the letter, so I submitted those, and I just wanted to be sure that those were made. Okay.
I didn't hear a motion yet, so.
All right, so.
I move it to you, letter being adopted.
I'm second. Okay. More discussion?
I want to compliment Colonel Guyer, it's an excellent, excellent letter. I don't support the surcharge, so when I vote no today, it's not against your letter, it's well-written. I just don't support the surcharge.
If I can, I want to draw your attention to a letter dated April 9, 2014, to the County Council. And it says, "At the present time, collection amounts are indicating there will be a significant shortfall estimated in the range of $4 to $5 million in the district's current tax collection, and the following factors are contributing to this shortfall." And it goes along and says why they made the mistake. "The same situation occurred during the last reassessment, leaving the district with a tax shortfall approximately $5 million." This is the second letter that I know that we have sent to them. They did not approve that surcharge at that time either. This is, I think it's like baseball, this is the third strike.
Would anybody like to, you have not spoken, John, Mr. Dowling?
I first have a question. On page two, it says that in the interview with Moody, we fell short of the average fund balance. What is the average fund balance?
Moody's calculates fund balance by combining a couple of different funds, the operating fund and the general, operating fund, special revenue, and the debt service fund. They're in the 26 percentile range, and ours fell short in the 17 percentile range. So of our peer districts, we were significantly lower than our peer districts.
My comment is that if we have a shortfall that we did not cause, we passed a motion to take all legal measures, this legal measure acquits the county of any responsibility to make up the money, because we're going to them with a tax increase. Tax increase in the sense that it's more than last year. It's quite possible that if there were an outcry over this, the Council could say, hey, talk to the school board, they raised the taxes. My vision of a legal method was to force the county without paying to us to give us the money back. I think this is going to hurt the referendum, I think that the issue will not be quite understood. If this was a budget that I had voted for, which I did not, and if it were a budget that had been, in my view, sufficiently vetted by the board, I might be inclined to fight for a tax increase. But since I did not vote to pass the budget, and since I don't think that we voted, vetted it to any significant degree, I cannot support this.
Mr. Earl Campbell?
I just want to remind board members, over the years, the counties have, I would say cheated out of money that we should have gotten and we never got. You know, so I don't have a problem with this, because when they give the taxpayer the break, the last time, nobody complained about that. You know, so I think we have, we have to come down and put our feet down, you know, whether they are going along with it, or whether the taxpayers goes along with it or not. You know, it's time for us to act like we are elected officials, you know, and not let the county push us over. As far as they letting us set the millage, that's not probably going to happen, because the delegation, many, the majority of the people on the delegation are not going to go along with it. But we have to do something, and maybe, maybe we may have to sue the county at some point, you know? We get the money that they have tucked in front of us. And this is the start, this year, it's been over years, the amount of money that they owe us. Every year it's positive, it gets more and more and more. So that's, that's my.
Ms. O'Shea?
That's certainly another legal option, we didn't explore that one. We are waiting on an audit that I'm grateful that Beaufort County Administrator Ashley Jacobs initiated. Tanya, do you have an update on that? It would seem that we would want to understand the outcome of that first, we're a little bit behind on when those results were supposed to come in.
Those were, I believe I sent an email to the board last week, and on Monday, there was a presentation to the Finance Committee at the county. I was unable to attend, but I, someone in my staff attended on my behalf. That should have been televised and available to the board, I'm not sure if it's posted online yet. The results were basically that the county complied with state law in regards to the calculation of the millage rollback. So they, they, there were some data errors that they found that were basically insignificant to the school district's budget issues and the shortfall. They were regarding penalties that had been added into taxable values on certain properties. So it's worth taking a look at that video, I'll check to see if it's online yet and make sure. But I, I think we're, there will be additional work needed to help understand better the shortfall that we've experienced, because that audit did not answer the questions that we were looking, that I was looking for.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
Dr. Wozniowski?
So it is online, I watched it last night, and I had a lot more questions, and that is why I will be voting no on the surcharge for the letter, the letter was very well-written. But it actually brought up more questions in my mind, and what the audit firm said in that meeting on Monday was that it was, they could only hypothesize with regard to the 6% to 4% shift. They didn't have any data to give us saying this is the amount attributable to that shift. And because of that, because I don't know if there's errors elsewhere, or there's something else going on, and it still does not seem clear to me where this, whether it's a process issue, 388 issue, error in calculations, I think that we need to get to the root of the problem before we try to make any further action. And that's simply, I just had a lot more questions, I watched the presentation from the representative from the Department of Revenue as well, and there's just a lot unanswered right now, and I think we need to get to the root of the problem.
Mr. Guyer?
I agree that they need to figure out why they rolled the millage back too much in the reassessment years. Your point is well-taken, but that does not take away the fact that they gave us millage and said that that millage would equal the amount of money we asked for, and they approved in our budget, and they did not provide that. The facts are very clear. We know how much money goes in the bank from the tax receipts, and that's what we're talking about, not, not how it's developed. That's another issue, for sure, but that doesn't take away from the fact that almost $19 million hasn't been given to, has been promised by the county that has not been given to us three times in a row. And so the process is important, but it doesn't take away from the fact that we're underfunded.
Dr. Wozniowski?
No, and I get that, and point well-taken. I just think that it's happened three times, and 15 years of that happening is too long, and clearly, someone needs to get to the root of the problem. I think we are the body that needs to be responsible for getting to the root of the problem and making sure that it stops. I think that we need to make sure that we're doing everything in our power, we're asking the right questions, and we're holding people's feet to the fire. Now, I think this could possibly be a short-term fix for getting us where we need to be for right now, but the problem is still going to present itself in another five years if we don't figure out what the root of this is. So that's, I mean, I think that that is the main crux of everything. We need to be able to ask the right questions, figure out what's going on, and work collectively with County Council, the auditor, the county administrator. I mean, your point about the 2014 letter, I get it, however, that was a different County Council at that time. We have a lot of new players, we have a new county administrator, so while these things have been being brought up, the players have been changing. So we're all, a lot of us are new, and a lot of County Council is new, so let's work together to make sure that we fix this problem for the foreseeable future.
Mr. Dowling?
I agree with everything that you've said. My point, though, is we did not cause the shortfall, and we are being expected to make up the shortfall by generating a tax increase in form of a surcharge and a millage increase, which we will bear the responsibility for. The opposite of that point, I believe, is to say to the county, we, the school board did not cause the shortfall, the county did, for what, whatever cause, whatever reason, you find the money to refund to us. Otherwise, we have the big black eye of having come in with a tax increase to recover, to recover from a problem that we did not cause. Let the agency that caused the problem find a way to get the money back to us, other than us generating a tax increase. So I'm not disputing anything, I'm just saying that the remedy, I believe, is not appropriate, that we should have to come up with a tax increase and bear the monetary and political cost of having to do that. That is what I think is acting as an elected official.
Mr. Campbell?
Is the tax increase an automatic if we ask for it? Counselor after approval, right? So, I mean, it's a fight, man, it's a matter of how you want to rectify it. If they're, if they're probably not going to approve it, to start with, but if they approve it, then the onus of responsibility for approving it is still on them as opposed to us.
It'd be on tax rate.
Mr. Dowling, you don't have the floor, Mr. Campbell does.
But I don't think, I don't think that, you know, we're to fix our battle right now, this is just a shot in the, in the whole war, I think. I think we're just lining up some, some evidence that things are wrong. That's, that's what I perceive it. And I don't expect that this letter is going to make them respond in any way because of guilt or because of the history. I think this letter is just another, you know, another brick in the wall.
Ms. Crosby?
In our last July 30 memo to, or letters from Chair to Chair, the school board to the County Council cited specifically state law that provides for the recovery of a shortfall in the prior fiscal year, and the remedy is a millage, a millage surcharge or millage override to, and there were, again, we discussed several factors that allowed for that, and a deficiency of the prior year was the, was the response. That is by state law, the remedy in a situation of a tax shortfall such as this. My issue, we do have timing issue. So on August, Monday, August 19, is a Finance Committee meeting of the County Council. After that, there are three council meetings until through the end of September. Tax bills will go out, be prepared, and go out October, November, so we are under some time constraints in order, and that is the reason for the issue coming before you today, is that we, in order to pass the surcharge, it does require three public hearings by County Council and an ordinance to be written. So this is the remedy by state law, so we are taking measures to address the motion made by the board to exhaust legal efforts. This is by state law, the effort that we are legally eligible for and entitled to the funding to make up that shortfall, and the timing is of the essence.
Would anybody else who has not said anything like to speak? Kathy Robine?
We submitted a budget. It was approved by the County Council. It's their job and their obligation, the way that it is set up in the state, for them, once they approve it, to fund it. They fell short. Now, we aren't the ones who set how they're going to collect the taxes, that's their responsibility, but we fell short. Are they dipping into their fund balance and paying us for what they owe us? I don't think so. I will support this letter. I, I think we need to take a stand. I don't want the taxes to be raised, but we need to take a stand. My constituents, most of them, that reached out to me last evening, said we need to move forward. We need to take a stand and say, we're not going to put up with County Council shorting us year after year.
Mr. Dowling?
Wait, Mrs. Crosby, oh, I have a question for Mrs. Crosby. The remedy that you described, is that a required remedy or an optional remedy?
It's optional.
So the question is then, do we have to do that, or should we do that?
Well, the board took a vote to explore the legal options, and that is the initial legal option that we're exploring, because that is what's allowed for the district.
Yes, I'm asking the board members, is that the wisest option to be taking, okay? And with all of the other financial challenges and proposals that we have confronted.
Ready to vote? So the letter that's before us with the corrections we already mentioned, so that was in paragraph two, the total number is $18,969,820. On the last page, under the Chair's signature, it says, "Chair of Beaufort County Board of Education." So all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Okay. Mr. Smith? I did see your hand.
Obstinate.
Obstinate, okay. Motion carries, 7-3-1.
Wanted to bring before the board today a request for the position of Deputy Superintendent, Chief of Schools. And as I begin the conversation around this, to recall, during the interview process, I spoke about building a high-performing system, and shared with the board that I thought that there was a weakness in organizational structure, and that weakness stemmed around having 30 principals that reported directly to the superintendent. At that time, I mentioned the need for a deputy superintendent slash chief of schools during, during that process. After that, during the two weeks in June, which I spent here prior to July 1, working alongside Dr. Berg during that transition period, Dr. Berg additionally shared with me that he felt strongly that our organization needed a deputy superintendent position, a superintendent-like position, that that was, what his assessment was, based on his experience and long experience as a superintendent and educator. Every system is perfectly designed to get the results it gets. That's a themming quote, that's not mine, but I think it's important in this conversation. Keys, in my mind, as I mentioned to the board in the past, to moving student achievement forward center around culture, systems, and instruction. Culture, systems, and instruction at the district office, culture, systems, and instruction within schools. If we want to build a high-performing system, and we're serious about closing achievement gaps, then this is a critical position that will serve the following functions. When you look at New Leader Project, Wallace Foundation, and research from University of Washington, just to name a few, they identify principal supervisor to principal ratio of 1 to 12. Reducing the span of control increases the effectiveness of principal supervisor on the ground, which is essential in monitoring closely what happens in the building at schools, as well as making sure, that's in terms of anybody's span of control, what happens within the area that they're immediately supervising. An essential component in building a high-performing system is building the human capital within that system. That is a key point and a key part of what this position is going to do as well. It's about supporting, it's about developing, and it's about evaluating. This is essential in helping develop our strategies for improving student achievement, ensuring compliance for district processes. Through a balance of pressure and support, we can develop our organization and we can move it forward. Leadership matters, and building instructional leadership capacity of principals and leadership teams is essential. It will strengthen our leadership pipeline into future administrators, assistant principals and principals, as well as future either instructional coaches or teacher leaders. And it also will assist the conversation that we're, the board have in the past in succession planning, because it will develop our human capital. Here in South Carolina, I can point to three districts of similar size that have increased their number of principal supervisors to reduce span of control ratios. For example, Richland 2, 28,000 students, has three principal supervisors. Richland 1, 24,000 students, has five principal supervisors. Aiken, with 24,000 students, has four principal supervisors. Critical component of this deputy position is to be able to integrate the work that we do and will be doing here in the district office with what is actually happening on the ground and as they support schools. Okay, that's a critical piece. That's another piece that I will have my eye on and my lens on as I visit schools, and I will be in schools. That I've mentioned to the board in the past, that I believe it's essential to making the right decisions here, but it is essential to have someone that can be at these schools frequently to work with and build the instructional leadership capacity of our principals and the entire leadership team at the school. This is essential, in my eyes, in terms of building this high-performing system, improving outcomes for students. I have provided you with the job description to review, and so at this time, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Mr. Strigman?
Thank you. On the board chart, this position reports to you.
Yes, sir.
The principals report to this position.
Yes, sir.
Everything else is the same on the on-charts?
Yes.
Okay, okay, because I'm confused, a little confused by, one of the bullets under essential functions says that, you know, recommend plans for improvement of instructional programs to the superintendent, and I thought we had someone in charge of instructional.
We do have a chief instructional services officer, but this person, this deputy superintendent, as they build instructional leadership capacity of the teams on the ground at schools, and they are. they are in the schools more frequently, they're able to give a better input in terms of what that, what schools are needing and what schools are seeing in terms of improving their own achievement.
And it just strikes me that that should be going through that other instructional services person. I understand that this is on-the-ground stuff, but somehow it just seems like that, seems like you're undercutting that other position with that. So you can explain why, how you're not undercutting.
I'm not undercutting, they're going to be, we will work in concert, and that's part of the important piece here, to bring the information specifically from what we're seeing in the school center, right, to inform and improve our instructional services, from the programs that instructional services works, builds, and designs to support.
Yeah, I'm not getting it, but my next question is, this is your succession plan, isn't it?
This is part of it.
Okay, this is someone you're going to be grooming?
This is part of it.
Okay.
Mr. Dowling?
I had a constituent call me up, and the first thing they said was, "How did Dr. Rodriguez, after forty-five days, decided that he needed a deputy?" And I said, "Honestly, I'm surprised it took him more than forty-five minutes. The need is, the need is clear." Conversation continued, though, with all the usual objections, the perception that we're top-heavy, the perception that we're broke, perception that we're trying to get a referendum through. I had an answer for everything except for the broke part. This is an unbudgeted position. I would feel much better about voting for it if I had a commitment from you that you will, when the person is hired, come into the board with a request for a line item transfer, to take every penny associated with the cost of this position out of one line item, to put in a line item higher in that deputy superintendent. Is that fair to ask of you?
It is fair to ask. This position is not, I'm not, I'm not asking for more dollars or anything else. This is, this is neutral plus neutral, because money is, I will be using dollars to shift over to fill the position. I will not be, I will not be asking for additional dollars.
Well, the thing is, I'm confused about is that any line item transfer over fifty thousand dollars has to be approved by the board, and since the position is now unbudgeted and unfunded, you have to find the dollars some way, and I have to be able to provide people with an answer, how are we affording this? So to me, the obvious solution is to get a line item transfer.
That's it.
Okay.
Ms. Orshak?
Dr. Rodriguez, you've more than made your argument for this position. In my informal conversations with you, you mentioned the prospect of an efficiency study of our district office as a whole, which I support. It's something that I would have liked to have seen in the previous administration, but that did not materialize. I personally would like to see the results of such a study before we take on or add on any significant tiers to the senior leadership staff of the district. Can you give us an update on what your thoughts are on an efficiency study moving forward with that?
I will be, thanks for the question. I will be having an efficiency study. We're, we're working and looking towards, towards that before I bring that to the board as, as the next step. However, I still feel that a position like this is essential in moving our system forward, and that's, I think, an important point to make for the board.
Mr. Dyer?
You've seen the results of the results committee and the metrics that we are going to be looking at to evaluate the superintendent's performance. I think we've done a good job. I think it states what the standard will be and how we will evaluate that standard. Now we have to give our superintendent the tools that he deems necessary to achieve the goals and requirements that we give him. I've not been a superintendent, and the critics that I read about the saying about why we should not have this or we should not do that, have not been a superintendent. Dr. Rodriguez has. I trust his judgment, and I will support this.
Dr. Wyszynski?
So I had a couple of questions, just so that the public and maybe those that are new to the county are reminded of some of the hierarchy that we used to have here at the school district. So I think I'm going to ask Mr. Campbell to help me with some of these answers, because I don't see Ms. Walton here, so she probably would be the other person I would ask. When was the last time that you can remember we had an assistant superintendent?
The last time we had one was when Dr. Trusey was here.
Okay, which was what years? I don't remember.
I know. At first, Mr. Gator was assistant superintendent, then after him was Dr. Cruz, and then the Dr.
I think I could, yeah, I can answer that, I think. There was a guy that was an interim for one year, McDaniel, and that was when my son graduated in two thousand and seven. Okay, so it would have to be after that. And then Cruz was, I don't, was she one, how many years was she?
She was here for quite a few years.
Okay, so let's say that's eight and nine, so roughly around two thousand and ten, maybe?
Okay, so roughly about ten years ago was the last time we had an assistant superintendent. What I'm getting at here is we've experienced some exponential growth in the last ten years. So not only do we have new schools, we have new students and new needs. So to me, this is a no-brainer. This is something that I've talked about to many of you probably, about me personally feeling that we needed an assistant superintendent due to our size and our growth. So I will be voting for this, also because, and your point is well taken on the cost, it's my understanding that it's not going to be an additional cost to us, that this is something that we have the capacity for. And again, like you said about giving the superintendent the tools that he needs to be successful, that all directly goes to our goals of student achievement and making sure that we have highly qualified teachers and administrators, and this person would directly be supervising those administrators at these different schools, and I think it's definitely, definitely needed.
Mr. Mel Campbell?
I've got to be voted for this, too, but I still need some questions answered. One, twelve-to-one ratio, how is that going to be affected by having one?
This, this doesn't get us to a twelve-to-one ratio, so I don't, what I'm saying in mentioning the twelve-to-one ratio is that that is what research and study has shown is ideal to get to. We're not there. I don't believe the necessarily, they might be, I'm not sure, the other school districts I mentioned in South Carolina are at a twelve-to-one ratio, but they have added additional in order to reduce that ratio, right? So. But that's all, that's what we can do at this moment, right? We need to be conscious of the budget, that's all we can do.
Yeah, in terms of the budget, you said you've got the money for this position. I'm assuming that you're going to move some money around to make that possible, and in terms of optics, I want to be sure that the money that you move around is not directly related to student achievement, but more so related to, to the organizational structure.
It's, it's related to support and support service.
All right.
Ms. Fidrich, then, Ms. Orshak?
I'd like to follow up on David's question, and since I'm kind of a visual person, Robin, would you mind pulling up the organizational chart from the district website, please? And Dr. Rodriguez, could you just kind of show me visually where on the organizational chart this position would be?
Sure.
Okay, so. I just typed in the search engine on the district website.
So Ms. Orshak, maybe you could ask your question while we're looking for that.
Again, I want to reiterate, I support this position. I think you have more than made your argument for it, but I'm going to, I really want to see that study of district office first. You know, I think, I suspect, over the years, we have some departments where there's quite a bit of redundancy, maybe some departments, maybe finance that may be understaffed. So for me, that's a critical first step before adding on and moving around. It's long overdue, and I can't thank you enough for considering this, and you'll put that in front of the board, but for me, it's a sequence matter. I want to see that first, this position added after that fact, so we, we get the big picture of our org chart internally. Thank you.
Ms. Fidrich, here's your chart.
So. I know. Yeah. I mean, go ahead. Okay, so. Well. It would be directly reporting to me. Can you see where, where it says?
Excuse me. You turn around, you turn around.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I want to keep you, I want to keep your eyes.
All right, so the record, where you see district principal, right? It would, it would be in that slot, and that would slide, slide down. The principals would be reporting to this position.
Okay, so then all the other, the chief instructional services officer, the human resources, so on, they're all on the horizontal, they're all equal in reporting to you?
Yes.
Right, okay. I am absolutely going to support this motion. I think Ms. Orshak makes an excellent point about the efficiency study, and I would hold you to, to having that completed. However, I think that at the beginning of school year, it is critical. We have new principals, we have new assistant principals in place, and I do believe this is a critical position, and, you know, if we wait three or four months, it, then it puts you behind. So I'm going to support this, but I'm also going to ask that the efficiency study, if we're going on faith, that that will be done.
Yes, and, and I'll just add this to, to what you've said, right? I'm, I'm thinking about this, right, not just in terms of this year, right? I'm thinking about this as a critical and essential position in developing our overall leadership, instructional leadership capacity for longer term, okay? And, and so the sooner I get that position in place, right, the sooner we can begin that work, and so.
Anybody else that could say something? Mr. Smith?
Actually, we need to make a motion. So, I do have a question, I have to go to motion. At this time, I'm making a motion that we do accept the, the job description, I mean, no, actually, I make a motion that we do accept the position from Dr. Rodriguez moving forward.
I'll second.
So the motion should read, "We create the position of Deputy Superintendent Chief of Schools."
Second.
That's, that's.
Julian, second.
Second in the chairs for her motion.
But you, you can make it.
That's fine.
I just.
Well, I have to pass this if I do. Yeah, I'll pass it, I made.
Um.
So, go ahead.
My, my concern, one of my concerns were, what was David and Patricia's motion, I mean, my concern was whether this person, because I do have a huge concern about this position as in the ISD position over the principals, and I was just wondering, but you said that they're going to, I guess, work together, because I did have a.
So the, the, the position of principal supervisor.
Right.
Right? Is very much on the ground and closely, closely monitoring, you know, schools as well as closely monitoring all aspects, but as well as closely monitoring instructional leadership, and, and developing teams, and developing strategies with those leadership teams in schools as well.
Got you, got you. And, and you already said that, basically, that the money is, the money is pretty much there, and the money will not come from the, the areas of closing the achievement gap, because I'm sure everybody already knows, when they say, when they say the word achievement gap, my name is right next to it, pretty much. Those were, those were some of my own concerns, and as well as, also, I already talked about that offline. I will support this position just because of the fact that, well, not just because of the fact, but because of the fact that I want you to have necessary tools to help this district move forward, and if that's what you need, and I'm going on that because of what the expectancy is that you're going to deliver, because I have the expectation that you're going to deliver, and you have not shown me nothing, wanting you not, so I wish you well, and I'm looking for that out of you, because, you know, that's what you said you're going to do, but let's give me this position. Thank you.
I support this position. Not being an educator, I was always kind of surprised that we had with the size and growth of our, our student body, that we just had all these senior staff members reporting just to a superintendent. I was kind of surprised there really wasn't something like a deputy or assistant, and I definitely think we have the need for it. We put our trust in you, Dr. Rodriguez, because we hired you as the CEO of our district, and you feel this is very important, and feel this is more important than some other services that we have already, you know, put in our budget, and you're going to make the appropriate recommendations for what should be, I guess you'd say, switched over to, to this position. I also like Ms. Orshak and Ms. Fidrich very much still support an efficiency study. I don't think this should be a replacement, it doesn't, you don't, you don't either, you've said the same thing, yeah. I think, I think this is great, great for our, our leadership in our district, and we do need to improve or model, have, have models for the people that are already in leadership positions in the district on how to rise up to the next, next position and, and improve the leadership, and I think this will lead to that, and first and foremost, we're here to educate our students, and I really think this is going to be very helpful in that regard. So those are my comments.
Mr. Stridiger?
Obviously, I'm going to support this because it's your job to build your team. We've given you the targets. If you need this to hit the targets, great, but I do wish you would take that bullet out about recommending improvement instructional programs to the superintendent and leave the one in that says works in concert with other senior leadership.
I'd be glad to do it.
I mean, if that's consistent, the way you're envisioning, I just, I'm uncomfortable. If I was the director of instructional services, I'd be uncomfortable with that line.
I'm, I'm, I'll be glad to do it, and I don't, I don't believe that that necessarily alters the, the, you know, the issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Mel Campbell?
I'm concerned about the title and the optics of the title. Deputy, deputy superintendent, and on the org chart, it's, it's relatively even with all of the other chiefs of staff. That's no real, you know, no hierarchy over them in terms of which is intended, so are you recommending also that those folks become deputies superintendent? Or you don't think that matters?
No, I'm not, I'm not making that recommendation.
Ms. Orshak?
We did a salary study a few years back, and I don't know if you've received a copy of it, but certain titles are attached to certain salary ranges, you know, the director, the coordinator, and so deputy is a new title, and I don't know salary-wise how that was calculated or how it stacks up against the other categories.
So, great question, worked with Ms. Walton on that, and Ms. Walton cares that it's the same, in the same category.
So is it with, so there's director, there's coordinator?
Chief.
You're totted here, okay.
Mr. Smith?
Now, I do agree, Mr. Campbell, I was hoping that this position right here, along with, um, with. here, along with, um, uh, with this position, in fact, of just, um, if something may happen, you may need to leave town, that this person could be second in charge. That's what I'm going with the intent of because of the fact that in the district right now, besides you at this district office, I don't believe that we have anyone here who's certified to be a superintendent. And that's what I'm hoping that this position will bring someone who will be second in charge, not only by you telling them in charge, but also by their credits, um, by their accreditation and by, and by their paperwork. So I'm hoping that this person here is also, also have their certificate of superintendentship too as well, because of, that's what I'm understanding, there's one other person in this building that has that. And that was one of my pet peeves, um, prior to your arrival here. And so I, I was hoping that this person here would be the second in charge right after you, they're going to be the deputy. Because right now, we currently have the position of, uh, chief operational officers of finances and chief operational officers of HR. And so I was hoping that this person would be deputy. That, that was my process of thinking. Yes, sir.
So, you know. When this position, if the board approves this position and when that position is advertised, right, I think, um, we're going to see the candidates that, that apply. And, and then I'm going to be able to see, uh, the credentials of each of those.
Yes, sir. But, but as well, I was also, you know, um, and I, I, I get that I'm, I'm, I leave right, I let you take care of that part. Um, but also I would hope to, I would hope to, um, have the understanding of that whoever this person comes in, that if you're gone, that this will be the second person in command and, and not.
Is that, is that, is that the question? Whether that person would be.
Yes, sir. Yes, that is the question. Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. So that, that person will be second in command. Okay. That's, 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 okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dowling.
Yeah, I don't think there's a question about, um, in the qualifications, says that the person must be an appropriate license or ability to be licensed in South Carolina. So I don't think there's any issue around that. I, I think Dr. Wisneski summed it up perfectly, and she said this is an open.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Well, um, to be honest with you, I didn't, I didn't read that. And I, and I had a question. And I directed it to him because I wanted to make sure I had the correct, a little direct notion. I'm, I'm just, I'm just telling you, because you, you brought it, but you brought it back up and, you know, you did it, you know, a little smartly. So I'm just letting you know that I, but that I wanted to, I wanted to make sure that I had the proper understanding before I voted for it. No harm, no foul.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Um, seeing no further indication that anyone would like to make a comment, I'd like to call the vote. Um, Robin, can you put the, uh, motion up again? The motion on the floor?
I don't know if I made it every time, but I, I thought Dr. Godz made the motion.
She did.
Yes. Because I changed.
Oh, yeah. Because she changed.
Mr. Dowling seconded it. Yes. That's the motion. That's why she passed the gavel.
I don't care if William made it and I corrected the, the wording either. Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, but I just want to make sure.
Ms. Orshak.
I just have a question. I didn't hear Dr. Godz make a motion with the microphone on. I don't know what we're talking.
Yes. She changed the wording in it and was it seconded? Was it amended? Mr. Dowling seconded it. Yeah.
Yeah, Mrs.
Yeah.
Mrs. Dowling said that he, that she made the official motion, so he officially seconded it because she said she changed my word, so.
Yeah. It was.
I'm just confused. Thank you for clarifying. It doesn't make a difference to me either. I just didn't hear any of that.
I bet.
Okay. The motion on the floor reads, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation to create a new position of deputy superintendent chief of schools. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Ten opposed, one. Motion carries ten one. All right. Next on the agenda is the, um, the job description update on the executive administrator to the Board of Education. And I would like to compliment Kathy Rubin. She'll be doing this presentation. She has worked extremely hard on this. Um, and I just want to thank you.
Okay. Let me preface this by saying the only part of this, um, job description that I worked on are the essential functions. Everything else that you see on here is as it was. Um, and this came about because, uh, earlier in the year, we had some, um, questions about what exactly were, um, expectations for this position. So we went back. Everything that is printed in black ink is what we were working with when we started. When these are, everything printed in black ink, let me say that again, was, were the essential functions. So I went back and I cross-referenced this with our policy and everything in red comes from our policy. So the only changes are additions that were found in our policy and, um, they, so that's what I, that's what I've done.
Mr. Dowling.
There are some things though that are written in black, even though you're not responsible for it.
You might know, stop.
There are some things written in black, you know, you didn't generate them, but I think that should be paid attention to. If I, if I may, show, uh, point out a couple of them. Reports to the chair and the offices of the Board of Education. I think it's a maximum that a person should only have one boss. You have the potential for the president, uh, the chair coming in, asking her to do something and not knowing that. The vice chair comes in and wants something else done in opposition to that. It just doesn't work to have more than one boss. The other thing that caught my eye is that, and I understand now, or you said it's from the past, uh, on qualifications, uh, and additional duties, performs other related tasks as assigned by the principal, the chief officer, superintendent, or other district office administrator as designated by the superintendent. Now, this is a job description for our employee and we had a big conflict for years about having a council who worked for both the board and the superintendent. We agreed that didn't work.
John, can I answer that? Um, that, I did see that when I got this from Alice and she told me, oh, that's not supposed to be there. So with that, that, because I questioned that too. And I, she told me, um, that last one, so.
It's my hope that we not vote until we're voting on what's going to be there.
Yeah. And, um, Alice actually told me, we don't vote on this. I mean, if, if the board wants to, she said, this is an HR document and that HR develops these. And, and actually, you know, we might want her to speak to that on, um, on Tuesday, the twentieth. She told me, you know, I knew she wasn't going to be here today. She, I asked her when the initial job description was developed, was it, um, a board document? And she said it wasn't. So, but I don't want to speak for her. I don't want to get myself caught in, you know, any kind of misinterpretation.
I certainly understand that, but I'm very confused because I've been through a number of conversations where the HR department and the superintendent's office, not you, Frank, said, she's your employee. We have nothing to do with anything of this. And that, that's going on from time immemorial. And now we're hearing that we have to have HR language in the job description, and the job description is what somebody's ultimately measured on. So let's not let stuff pass. I don't see, even see why we're looking at this unless we're looking at what we should vote on, and I think we should vote on it, so.
Well, the reason for me bringing it forward is I just wanted you to see the additions and the alignment to the policy there.
Okay. I would maintain that we do have the voting authority eventually on this job description since the executive assistant is our employee by admission of the HR department.
So, um, going back to that additional duties, the third bullet point, um, my understanding, but this is just since I've been the chair in the last eight, eight months, that sometimes, Robin, are not you, aren't you sometimes asked to assist with duties of the district via the superintendent's request?
Yes.
So I think that.
And I think the word principal was the one that was not supposed to be there.
Just have superintendent there, not all those other things. Because sometimes don't you copy names or, or bring information to him or whatever? Otherwise, you'll have to come through me.
I assist the superintendent's office. Yes.
I'm sorry?
I, I said I do assist within, in the superintendent's office.
Yeah. When required, exactly, requested.
But once again, I agree with Mr. Dowling. I don't think that that should be happening, that should not be happening. That's a conflict of interest. It's that, if the superintendent has, uh, secretary or has an assistant, so therefore that who he should be, who, who he should use. Now, when the superintendent has an assistant, he has a whole staff in this building. I don't think that they should be using the board secretary because, once again, we also talked, talked about, um, doing other things within the board, um, doing, doing, doing other, doing some other things as, as a board. And if, and if anything, those things were to happen, then she would need all the time that she have. I don't think that, that, that's the case, then she, then she could work for him indirectly and, and we, and we would need a, a, um, executive assistant.
Mr. Dowling.
In addition, it goes on to say, uh, the principal, chief officer, superintendent, or any other district administrator associated by the superintendent. I would submit that if we're going to act professionally, we have a professional document as a, as a platform, not to comment on your board, the quality of your work, and this is fine, okay? But this is not a do, a document that I would support.
So we could have, oh, go ahead. I have a suggestion.
I agree with, with everything that was said so far. It appears that this document is coming from under the superintendent's, uh, purview and not ours. It's just a number of things there that not relate to, to her role as our administrative assistants. A lot, a lot of things here is related to, to superintendent's, uh, assistance of subjects as opposed to, to, uh, the solely our, you know? And that's, that's what, I see a bunch of stuff in here that, and my, and my estimate is not qualified as a document that I need to look at and vote on.
Um, Mr. Earl Campbell.
The executive administrator to the Board of Education, she works for us, okay? So if, if we can't agree with this, then are we going to come up with another job description? That is my question. You know, Ms. Cushingberry has been in the issue a long time and she knows the ins and outs, not only of board members, board, board members, but as far as district, she do. And I think sometime, there going to come a time when maybe this, the, uh, superintendent's secretary or administrative assistant may be out because of emergency. And the reason why they come to Ms. Cushingberry, because she knows what's going on. Now, you know, we make things so, uh, how was I saying this? If we don't agree with this, then come up with a, 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 a job description of, from board members and, and leave all this stuff alone, don't even worry about it. You know, we waste so much time hogging about little small stuff. We supposed to be focusing on students. And ninety-nine percent of the time of our board meeting, we talk about stuff that we're out in the left field. Doesn't have anything to do with students, none at all. So if we don't agree with this, then let's come up with a job description from the boards.
Ms. Orshak, then Ms. Vidrich, then Mr. Dowling.
I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this. Do we have an action item here or no?
No. I did not bring it to the board for action. I brought it to the board for point of information.
Okay. And I want to thank Mrs. Ruben for taking the time to work on this. Um, the title of the document is pretty plain, executive administrator to the Board of Education. That job description says that that individual, whoever he or she is, works for the board. And evidently, according to recent counsel, all, all employees of the district report to the board. So, um, I appreciate your efforts there. I'm not sure what we do at this juncture with the document, other than just, um, provide opinions.
Ms. Vidrich.
My comments are along exactly the same line. When I saw that this is an update, I'm looking at this exactly as an update and you're seeking input, right? Ms. Ruben, thank you so much for all the time and effort you have done with this. And so there are some questions, and so I thought that perhaps, maybe I'm being too literal, but this is an update on where it is at this point. And I would just recommend that if someone has some other conversations other than that which has been illuminated thus far, then to send it to you. And then you indicated that on Tuesday, Ms. Walton would be back and maybe some of this conversation could be included in how this works with HR and whether, you know, that can be fleshed out. But I thought today, this was just, you were updating us on the progress and seeking input.
Mr. Dowling.
Yeah. To me, we're just updating each other with our opinions. Uh, I don't think it's proper to have a document that sets up the executive say, uh, administration like a sitting duck. And I don't think, opposed to what my learned colleague, Mr. Campbell, said, she sets up by, set up by this, by having too many bosses, ill-defined duties. And if, if we know that, I think it's our responsibility not to just let it ride and hope somebody changes it. So I hope that we bring that forward into a discussion with the Human Resources Director on Tuesday. If it's not too late to put it on the agenda.
I know. I'm thinking it might be too late. Might have to wait.
Mr. Smith.
And I agree totally with Mr. Dowling, with everything, uh, he just said. And, you know, um, one thing I have to remind of, let me remind, um, some of my colleagues of is, uh, that it is our, it is our, it is our responsibilities. Yeah, students are our responsibility, but also the running of every school, every, every building and of everything that is attached to Beaver County School District name is our responsibility as well, as elected officials. Moving forward. I, I often say it's not about the person in the position. It's about the position and the function of the position. So I think there are times, there are times when we do things that regardless to whoever ABC is the principal of Bluffton High School, the function needs to be there so that it's the same across the board for Bluffton High School. And I'm just using that as an example. So it, it's really not about the posi, the, the, the person, it's about the position. And as Mr. Dowling said, uh, Mr. Dowling stated, that we need to make sure that the, the, the position matches what their level of expectation is. And, and, and here, looking at it, 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 it does not. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's just my, 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 um, that's my thoughts on that. So I just hope that, um, in the future, that we won't get caught up on the person and not, and not, and not the position.
Ms. Ruben.
I think this is what I've heard, okay? Let me just recap. Um, let me repeat again, I only touched the essential functions. So now we have, and I think it's good, you know, we've looked at this. I, I don't think people really looked at it, right? So now we know we have some concerns. I've heard concerns about what's listed under additional duties and the reporting category. So I will volunteer to meet with Ms. Walton, to take these comments to her as the HR person and schedule, then come up with a response that we can send out and schedule her. I don't think, you know, we can probably, the, the twentieth agenda is probably full, but get her to come to the September board meeting perhaps. Does that sound like something you'd like me to do? I, I guess, I don't know. I, I guess, I don't know how I figure that out because I'm not making a motion, I'm just asking for direction.
Does anybody object to what Ms. Robine just said?
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you very much. All right, next is our review of board policies. Mr. Dowling?
Madam Chair, you disbanded the board, are you asking me as an individual, we have no policy committee.
So would you like to present your product, though?
I'd be happy to, I just was unclear as to whether you were going to request that or not. This is the revised policy manual. As I explained when we distributed to you, it took the existing manual and reexamined it in terms of legal content, constitutional protections for members, and best practice. There's two ways to do this. We can go through it, policy by policy. All policies require three readings. If you pass this, it'll go down to two readings, but for now, we have three readings. There are remedies, we can either go through it policy by policy, which I think in terms of everybody buying into it might be the best option. Or we can offer it as a first reading as a document, which would eliminate the need. You can still ask questions about specific policies, but it wouldn't require the one, two, three, four, five approach. Or we could just blanket first reading approval and schedule a second reading. I have, as an individual, I just have an individual opinion. I believe the policy is sound. It took a long time because I was extremely lenient in running the committee meetings to provide the maximum amount of input from non-committing members. So we had virtual committee of six or seven people commenting through this. And we took nothing for granted, every word, every participle was examined. Again, it's not quite finished, but I had to turn it in. What's untouched is the voluminous policy on public inquiry. It's been a great effort by the Board, it's long. And we have, except for the policies that have been recommended to date by the Finance Committee, we still have no policies to speak of that dictate the governance oversight of the district's operation in terms of financial or academic or operational policies. That's for a future topic, I guess. So you got the manual, I think the board should motion which method they want to use to review and vote.
And my preference would be your first, what you also said, is to just do each, each policy. But that's, I mean, do I just go, is that, anybody object to that, or does each person want to say, we can count out which way you want to do it, all as one, one job, you know, as one? Ms. Ohrshak?
So given the, given the fact that the ad hoc committee has already been dissolved and completed its finished product, which is in front of us, what will be the vehicle for incorporating and making the revisions that may be brought forth today? I just want to understand the process here.
I would say they can be made at, made at the time of the discussion, the revision, it's going to be a wording. Ms., excuse me, Dr. Wizniewski?
Will we be voting on any changes or wording, wordsmithing that we do? I would assume that.
I would, I would say yes, we would have to be because we are ultimately going to be, you know, then voting for a first reading. So if it's changing, yes. Okay, Mr. Dowling and then Mr. Campbell?
I would say that historically, we have never succeeded in an attempt to go through it line by line, policy by policy. It was abandoned the last time we tried it based on the recommendations that the School Board Association had given us. The other thing is that we didn't deliver this as an template to be used necessarily as an eleven-person wordsmith operation. Where we're presenting it as a document that says, here's our best cut, with a lot of input from even non-committing members, as what the best policy for these topics are. And if you agree, great, but if we get into a wordsmithing contest at ten fifteen, it'll be ten fifteen tomorrow morning, and we will not be through, guaranteed.
Mr. Campbell?
That's my sentiment, I mean, our, our committee was charged with looking over the policy and bringing back a finished document. And this is a finished document, you had time to review it, and if you do have questions on anything particular, fine. But my mind is that we're gonna put this up or down for the first reading, that's, that's, that's what I think.
Okay, Mr. Smith, Ms. Fidrich?
And my question was, I was gonna ask, in the past, help, I give a little help, when each committee has bought forth documents as this, have we, have we read them one by one, also have, did we, didn't we vote them? Did we have to have three readings? I thought we only, after we voted it in, that was it, I mean.
Can I respond?
Sure.
No, the policy is enforced, the policy is required for a reason. When, when someone makes a motion here at the meeting that I want a policy that says, that's not a policy, it is the force of policy. But it disappears into the minutes, it doesn't make it into a policy manual that someone can go and check on what is the board's policy on this, okay? So you have to take that will of the board and turn it into a policy. Now, the last time we tried a policy by policy review was upon the submission of suggested changes by the South Carolina School Board Association. We managed to change, in the course of three quarters of one meeting, most of policy two. And then we abandoned the effort in frustration and kicked the can down the road to the new board. There has been an ad hoc committee in the past which operated without deadlines to submit a policy manual in September of sixteen to the board. They did not operate on the, on deadlines, I believe that they convened in January sixteenth, and the manual is adopted in September of sixteen. Since then, there has been precious little action around policies. Does that help you?
All right, Ms. Fidrich, Mr. Strivinger, Mr. Campbell?
I, I do want to thank everybody that did work on this, this is, I think, really important work. And it would be quite laborious to go through every single one, however, I do have several questions, and I don't know how you would like those to be addressed.
So did I misunderstand you, because I thought you wanted, your preference was to go policy by policy, I thought that's what you said at the beginning.
That's my personal, that was my personal preference, hearing the objections and rethinking about it. I think that in recalling what we did, I don't think it's the best way to go. I think that everybody had from August sixth until today to review this. They should know what their questions are, we could open it up to discussion as a document, and then people can say, all right, I've got a question on page four about this policy. Then we can discuss that, rather than go through and read all the policies that everybody may agree with anyway.
Right, I actually was thinking of it, I think in the same way, but maybe saying it differently, I was thinking like, okay, policy two point one, who has questions? I wasn't thinking, go ahead and read the whole thing. So that way we go, go through it in order fashion, or we can just say, start with Mr. Campbell or Ms. Ohrshak and say, you know, everybody do two, two, if you have two questions, go around the table and do two more, we can do it that way.
Whatever the board wants, we've delivered the product to the board.
Mr. Strivinger?
As I recall, the first policy, ad hoc policy committee, we did go through it. At that time, the attorney went through it one by one and said, policy two point one, so I don't have any objections to policy two. And, and we did get through it. That committee, by the way, operated from March until September, not January.
I stand corrected.
Because I wasn't on the board in January. And that is the way we went through it. And the second time, you're right, we abandoned it because there was a lot of pushback on legal advice given by the School Board Association, so, so that was abandoned. But, but that, that process was the same, policy two one, does anyone have a question? And if you don't, at least go through it like that. You know, human nature is going to be that six months from now, somebody's going to say, gee, see, now I didn't know that. But if you go through it one by one, then you can say, no, wait a second, we went through it one by one, so you really have no excuse for not knowing about that policy. So I would suggest that's, that's the way to do it.
Mr. Earl Campbell?
I think the easiest way never to do this is to read the policy, all of them, everybody has a copy of them. And if you have any question at the first reading or the second reading, you bring it up. But I don't need to read this policy from two quarter one all the way through, line by line, to understand, I understand the policy. And all you have to do is read the policy, you haven't enough time to do that. And if you don't want to do a first reading today, do it another time, you know?
Ms. Ohrshak?
So I just have two questions, one for the committee, for all three committee members. Is this a finished product in each of your view of a, of a policy manual for the Beaufort County Board of Education? Yes or no, that's all, that's all I need.
No.
Dr. Wizniewski?
It's not as simple yes or no.
Would this be considered a complete product?
This is a finished product of the modifications from the policy manual that we had that was, had previously been, gone through a first reading.
I know.
So other things that have not been codified, other things, new policies not necessarily explored fully.
So I should clarify my question, finished product, full working product, governing all aspects of the board's business, do you consider this to be a full product? I know it's revisions of the existing product.
No.
No. Mr. Campbell?
It depends on what you mean by finished, Ms. Ohrshak. At my mind, actually, we submitting this means we're finished.
You're finished, I understand that.
And whatever adjustments need to be made have to now be made by the full board recommendation. So I, I, I don't, you know.
So my question is this, and let me try to phrase it. This document, as it stands before us today, it is complete based on your, your given guidelines for the committee. But do you think it serves as a complete policy manual for the Beaufort County Board of Education, as comprehensive as it can and should be at this time, yes or no?
The answer is, there may be revisions needed by the board.
Okay, all right, all right. So I just wanted to get a feel for our objective today. Are we just approving this, and it's not even a complete revision of the original manual, there's even some other areas you haven't dealt into yet. So what is our objective today? Are we just saying, yes, this looks good for what it is? Or are we approving this now as the man, the policy manual that the Beaufort County Board of Education uses as its governance guide? So I'm not sure what I'm approving today, if it's as simple as the first, or if it's as, you know, complex as the latter. I don't know what the objective is today.
I thought the objective today was to go through, and I'm not saying read each, you know, policy two point one verbatim, but perhaps Ms. Or, excuse me, Ms. Carlers could come to the podium, and let's just, you know, policy two point one, who has questions? Then policy, what's the next one? Two point two, who has questions? I mean, I just think it's fair to, you know, let people ask questions because perhaps some of us have the same questions, so just clarify things. All right, Ms., Dr. Wizniewski?
I'd like to get a motion on the floor. I move that the Board of Education approve the policy manual at first reading, subject to modifications made during discussion. So we can go by, so this is a note, we can go by policy by policy, but I'm just trying to get something on the floor that we start talking about it in formal discussions, and any changes, like Tricia said, she had some things, we start incorporating those.
Mr. Campbell's second discussion? Mr. Dowling?
I just, what is the motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the policy manual at first reading, subject to modifications made during discussion.
Okay. My take on that is, Ms. Ohrshak's question has not been answered yet. I believe she was asking, is this good enough to serve as the policy manual for the district? And are all the policies that we should have in this? I believe that was your question, was it not, Ms. Ohrshak?
I, well, that was a piece of it. Is, is it that, or is it just that this partial product produced today we're signing off on? I don't know, there's a difference between the two, there's a very distinct difference between the two questions. And I, no one really offered a perspective as to which one they thought we were actually agreeing to, what, what the objective was today.
Mr. Strivinger?
I believe that we're going to approve a new policy manual that replaces the one that we're going by today. So if you feel that the one today is not comprehensive, and this one's not going to be comprehensive, but it's a heck of an improvement over what we have currently, so I think that's what we're voting on. I understand you're trying to make an argument about the completeness of it, but I'd like to stay focused on, this is a major improvement on what, on the policies we're under today until we get through the third reading of it. So I have to focus on that, that being.
I just have a process, a process question to follow up.
Okay, has, has anybody not spoken yet that would like to say something, or we'll go back to?
I would just like to ask Mr. Dowling the question. Mr. Dowling, do you believe that we need to have more discussion on other policies?
Most certainly.
Okay, then, if that's the case, then why can't we wait until we get all the policies?
Because the chair demanded that we turn this in.
Well, I, I understand that, but we can still.
Oh, okay, let me answer this way, Mr. Campbell. We will never have all the policies we need because it's a continuing, living document and process. There will always be need for new policies. If we're debating Dr. Wizniewski's motion, my comment is, is if you want to view it as a revision to the existing manual, fine, but don't delude yourselves into thinking that we have a policy manual, because we do not. We have a better policy manual, such as it is, than we had before. We still have a policy manual that is severely lacking in the nature and degree of policies that we should have to provide expectations for the, how the district is governed.
And the reason I ask that question is because if, if we don't, don't have a complete policy manual now, then my thing is, we need to have, need to get one. And, and don't, don't keep every, every, several months we add this and we add this and add that. I mean, you know, every, every school district has a, every board has a policy manual. I could remember what our manuals that. I could remember what our manuals that, we got it down to what policies is now, you know? We need to have a set of policies that is going to deal with the issue of this district and our students. And I hope that at some time in the near future, we do that.
I think it was Dr. Wyszynski.
So I'm just going to read something real quick. From the February 11th, 2019, ad hoc policy committee meeting, we defined our scope. The scope of the committee will be twofold. Number one, review and edit the existing policy manual, make recommendations to the full board for changes to or elimination of existing policies. Number two, also recommend to the full board new policies that are developed not only by the ad hoc committee, but also developed in collaboration with the three standing committees. So my point is, that my motion is to meet the intention of number one within our scope. I'd like us to move forward in doing so, but I also am very in tune with Mr. Dowling and Ms. Orshak's point, in that the scope and point of number two has not been met fully and needs to be further explored. But I would really, I would really love to move us forward in meeting number one. The work's been done since February, and it's time to approve the first part.
Mr. Mel Campbell?
Yeah, I totally agree with that. I mean, it's clear where we're going with the conversation, but the fact is, what we have is a little better than what we had. And yes, we need to go on and do some additional things in collaboration with the other committees, but now that we're defunct, the other committees got to come up with policies that we bring to the entire board to get it done. But this is a little bit better document than we had, and this is what we're bringing to you to discuss and vote on today. This is our finished product in terms of what we have done up to our operational time. Okay? That's as simple as it is. And yes, you know, the policy is a living document. It's going to continue to grow and continue to evolve and continue to change over time. And we voted in the last meeting how we want that to happen, which means we don't want a standing committee. We want it to operate from a full board perspective. And that's, that was my interpretation of that vote, when we did not vote for standing committee to keep the policy manual going and keep generating more policies as the committees came up with them. So this is where we are, and this is what, a little bit better than what we had as policy. We do have a policy manual, you know, it needs adjustment and needs improvement, and we did step one in terms of that improvement.
Mr. Dowling?
I'd like to call your attention to that there is a policy in here that says we will continually, as a board, review policies. And Mel is correct, but please keep in mind, keep in mind that if we accept this today and the concept that we have a policy manual, just we have, in reality, translated to an 11-member policy committee. That's in reality. But formally, we have no process to develop future policies. There is no documented process. We've heard vague statements like, "Well, we'll bring it to the board, we'll do this, we'll do that." There is no documented policy or protocol as to how we will evaluate wordsmith and approve future policies. So that's what you buy into if you accept this as the policy manual.
Mr. Strivinger?
I'd just like to get us refocused on the motion. And I think this segues into a future topic about why board meetings last so long. I thought Mel was elfing, we can have a policy manual right now. It's not up in front of us, it's out on the website. If we don't move on this, then we're still operating under that old one, which is much less desirable than this one. I don't think we have to go a whole lot further. There's another argument about the role of policy committee and how, that's another argument. I'd like to get us focused on this one and take care of it.
Ms. Orshak?
So just a question. Okay, so this manual in front of us, does it include every aspect of the existing manual on the website? That's what I want to know. So in other words, I know you didn't get through all the revisions of the manual, but does this product in front of us have all of the, even the unedited ones? Because if we vote on first today, we're accepting those as well, is what I'm saying. It does. Okay. So can I, I would like to just amend the existing motion, just to simply add after policy manual, just policy manual revisions, because technically that's, that is what we're voting on today, just all of the revisions that have been made to the existing manual.
So your amendment is, you bring the word revisions?
Yes. After the words policy manual, add the word revisions. So I move the Board of Education approve the policy manual revisions at first reading, subject to modifications.
Okay. Any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Dowling?
I don't want to get started on the shortening the meetings conversation, but I just want to respond to something. A lot of these arguments, points that are brought up, are technically a little out of place. But the problem is, they are relevant to the voter, to the person asking the question. As information, they need to come to an informed vote. So even if they are slightly irrelevant, even if they are slightly pulling in the conversation, they, I believe they have to be allowed in order to equalize everybody's opportunity to make an informed vote. So be that as it may, I support Mrs. Orshak's amendment.
All right, let's vote on the amendment. All right, so the amendment is to add the word revisions as it is up there. So that's the first, the first vote right now, to insert the word revisions in the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Now go back to the original, which is the whole motion that's up there. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Work.
Now we can start with the discussion. So Policy 2.1, we're not going to read the whole thing, you've all had it, so are there any questions, concerns, statements from any member? Ms. Vidrich. Ms. Carles, do you mind going up there because we might need to rely on your legal expertise? Or how about get a seat, two up there? You don't need to stand up there.
I can stay, I mean, okay.
Yeah, if you have a microphone there, that's perfect. Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes.
And since I was not at the meeting on August 6th, if I bring up anything, it's already been decided, someone just told me, okay? And just, all right, so Roman numeral 2A. I'm going to ask where it says, "The policies we've put in written form and continually reevaluated." Okay? What is the definition of continually? And I know that goes to a topic that we've been talking, you know, but I think that if we're going to have a policy that says they're continually reevaluated, we need to know how that's done. So I have a question about that. I also have a question about 2.5, 2A5. Now, I guess that's got changed to 4. Adopt operating and capital budgets that support the board's strategic plan. Is that the same as the district's strategic plan? So that's a board strategic, I see a yes, I see a no. I see, I mean, what is that? So that's another question. So I think, you know, wordsmithing, John, I apologize, but, you know, I am a teacher. So Roman numeral 2. No, I apologize, Roman numeral 3. Last sentence, "An individual acting in his/her official capacity as a member or employee of the board." Right? "Or resulting solely out of his/her membership in," membership in, not membership on. All right? And then this is, this is one that I think, Roman numeral 4. Tell me if I'm going too fast, but I am trying to expedite this. All right? "The regular term of office for each board member is four years. The term of office for board members elected during a regular election commences one week after the certification of the election." Okay, so I'm assuming, so that, I'm assuming is like in November. Okay, so the second, second to, you know, so sometime. So if you then go to, and I know this is, I'm cross-referencing. If you go to section of Policy 3.1, 1F. Okay, that's, I don't know what page that is, sorry, there's no page numbers. There are no page numbers. So Policy 3.1, 1F. "All board officers will be elected to a two-year term and serve until its successor is elected and assumes the office. Election of officers will be held at the first meeting in January of each numbered year, if available." Okay. So my question is, if someone loses their office, or doesn't run, or whatever, and they are seated like the middle of November, just now, John?
Yep.
And seated like the middle of November, and let's say that person is the chair. Okay? So then is there no chair from the middle of November until January? Okay, so I just, I'd like that...
Do you want me to answer it?
Yeah, I know the answer too, but you can go ahead and answer it.
It's a good question, but it's not one we have to face right away. We do not know when we will be able to phase in the fact that a person's term begins the week after the election. Because all of you people, when you were elected in the fall, your term of office was certified through December of 2022. Okay? So we're going to have to reach a point where somebody or other is going to get shorted a couple of months, but it's not going to take effect. And since that won't be changing anytime soon, there was no need to change when we have the office of elections.
Let me give a background, because probably the most important thing you left out, I agree with what you said, is that it's state law, that they be seated within one week of being certified or something to that effect. So right now, that's not what, the way we've been seated on the Beaufort County School Board. But yet, everybody that's seated has been certified in the manner that John just reported. So nobody here is going to, I don't think, be replaced one week after the November elections in, what is it, 2020.
Okay. And I understand all that. I mean, I do, because we've had some little discussion about this. But this is our policy manual. So why are we even changing it right now and...
You can't have, you can't have a policy that is in conflict with the law. So therefore, you cannot have the terms running through December.
So should there not be some information or some, you know, some clarifying information that says that this, even though we're not enacting, you know, enacting this now, that this will be effective? Or, I'm just asking, because it, to me, when I read a policy manual, those two things are in opposition to each other. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know how to rectify that, but it just seems that if we're going to have a policy and we're not following that policy, it should be in some verbiage that it's not, that will take effect as soon as, or...
Sure. We can, we can develop an exclamatory sentence at the end of it that details that.
All I have for 2.1. Okay. Anybody else for 2.1 or... Okay. I think Dr. Wyszynski next, then Mr. Strivinger, then Mr. Earl Campbell.
I'm just trying to get clear on what Tricia was pointing out. You were pointing out 3.1 and the election of officers, and how that might conflict with 2.1. Is that correct?
With, yes, with 2.1 and Roman numeral 4.
And your concern is that there was a vacancy?
And what if there was? Just the way...
Well, I think, I think below that, in G, it kind of addresses that. In the event of a resignation or any circumstance by a majority opinion prevents an officer or board, I mean, I would think that if there's a vacancy, that would be covered under G.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Right. Okay.
That we would, there is an avenue to follow if that occurs.
Right. And I guess my, when I read that, my thought on that was, then, it's not just in the event of, I mean, it will happen. It's not just in the event of, it is we are setting ourselves up for that to happen without any other verbiage saying that we know this is going to happen, so therefore, yeah. Gotcha.
Mr. Strivinger, then Mr. Earl Campbell.
We just said we were going to develop exclamatory verbiage. Who was going to do that? I thought we were going to do that right here, right now.
Good question.
Yeah. This is the only we that we have, so... What would you suggest? We put in there to clarify that as soon as possible, we're going to adhere to state law.
That might not be the best way to word it.
No, I think, I think what David's saying, how do we get it into the proposal, because we have no policy committee?
Yeah, so let's do it. Suggest, someone suggested wording in.
Okay, then let's go back to 2.1, Roman numeral 2A. Are we going to define the word continually? Policies will be put in written form and continually reevaluated in terms of changing needs.
I would, I would recommend just striking the word continually and just keep reevaluated. Okay? Continually, I mean, was that daily, hourly, minute?
Well, in the absence of an ad hoc policy committee, then I would, I would agree with. I mean, continually should be eliminated and then reevaluated. So I would be fine with that. Do we need to vote on, I mean, are we, I don't know how we're doing this.
Yeah, let's vote on each thing. All right.
So a motion...
Or we can say, does anybody object to that change? That would be a quicker way.
That would be quicker.
Yeah. All right. Any objections to removing the word continually?
Yes.
Okay. Explain your objection.
My objection is that it further puts in policy into concrete. I think that we could substitute the word "will periodically review."
That would be perfect.
I think that's a great, great suggestion, John.
So the policy will put in written form...
And periodically reevaluated. Take out continually, substitute periodically. Any objections to that?
Okay.
All right.
All right. Paulus, Roman numeral 2, 4. Just want to make sure the verbiage is consistent throughout the document. Is this a board strategic plan or a district strategic plan?
It's board strategic plan.
I don't think the district can have a strategic plan that differs than the board's, the board drops the...
So I just want to make sure, so we will always refer to the strategic plan as the board strategic plan? And so on the website, it talks about the board strategic plan?
My understanding is, and Dr. Regis can help us with this, so the district annually has to fill out what's called a quote, "strategic plan," unquote. And that is different from the board's strategic plan. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. So would this be the best way to identify our strategic plan?
I think so.
Okay, yes. Okay. Mr. Strivinger?
Wasn't there a definitional section in the beginning of our manual that...
Board role and job description.
That defined things like that? If it's in italics, I think it has a definition somewhere. But we don't have that in front of us.
That's in section one, introduction of policies. Yeah. It's under, let's see. Strategic plan refers to the current Beaufort County School District five-year strategic plan approved by the board and submitted to the South Carolina State Board of Education. That's under Roman numeral 1E. And then F underneath that talks about strategic governance plan or a strategic governance manual.
So just to clarify, to the, is that, so with what we have before us, we're missing, and no changes were made, is that correct to one...
To the introductions and the...
To the introductions to the policy, 1.1, 1.2, 1.3. I thought some changes were made there.
They're...
No? Yes.
For a point of clarification, on section one, policies introduction, the policy committee itself did not have any changes, but there was redlined items on here, which I believe is from the first reading of the previously revised policy manual. is from the first reading of the previously revised policy manual. So I don't know if these need to be incorporated into what we're doing today, so that they, this would actually be, I guess, a second, than just this one page, so. Because it's already gone to first, I believe.
So it seems like the board members need that, those pages?
Yes, they're there.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just one page.
Okay.
I think we've got two different things called the same name. What Dr. Rodriguez submits to the state under the term of strategic plan, I don't believe is what this references, because we adopt operating on capital budgets, our operating budget, our capital budget. So it should be in accordance with our strategic plan. Now, maybe we're calling it the wrong thing, maybe the district is calling it the wrong thing, I don't know.
Well, I would contend that we need to get it right, because I think it has led to some confusion in the past.
Okay, well, if we adopt this, we've got it right.
Say again, I'm sorry?
If we adopt this, we've got it right, because we own what we'll call it.
Okay.
All right, so then.
Madam Chair, I do not want to hold this process up, because.
You're not holding it up.
But I sometimes feel like I, like I, you know, I just think that these things are important to make sure that we all know.
Sure.
What is the board's strategic plan?
I agree.
And don't worry, we had no discussion on August 6th. No.
Yeah, okay.
You're not reading?
No. So what is the board's strategic plan? What is the board's strategic plan?
Dr. Wasneski?
Per section one of this introduction, it reads, under Roman numeral 1, item E.
Which we don't have, right?
Right, that's what Robin's giving you guys. Strategic plan refers to the current Beaufort County School District five-year strategic plan approved by the board and submitted to the South Carolina State Board of Education. So I would contend, based on that reading, that our strategic plan is the one that we approve for the district. So basically, they're synonymous. She's bringing that one out right now.
But I thought that what the district has to submit is annually, not every five year, is that correct?
We, but we submit, we do submit annually to the DOE. Just point, one of the things, what I've seen in the past, is when you're working on a new five-year strategic plan, for example, right, that staff brings forward to the board a strategic plan that's anchored in board votes. And the board votes on it, and votes to you to approve it, or allow it. And I think that, I'm not sure if that's exactly what you're saying. That's what you're saying? Okay.
Okay, so into, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I ask? In 2013, a committee group was formed, along with district personnel and so on, to create the five-year Beaufort County School District strategic plan that was put into effect from 2014 to 2019. We do not have that, it is out of, it is out of compliance right now. An annual, an update is in the process of being submitted, because it was not submitted when it was due, because of 2019 to 2024. So every district has a five-year district strategic plan. I'm just trying to clarify, is that the same thing as the board's strategic plan, as stated in our policy? If so, that's, that's great, I just think it needs to, and you're saying that on page one, which, Robin, thank you. Show them where, Rachel, please?
Page one, Roman numeral 1, E. And it refers to that five-year plan that you're talking about? That's what it's, I believe you're correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
And that plan, does that plan, is that the plan that's coming to your committee right now?
No, as, that plan was, the plan is going to have a one, have just a one-year update, and then a new strategic plan will be developed. Dr. Rodriguez sent us an email about this a couple days ago, and it has not come through the academic committee yet. It never was put on the academic committee agenda. There was, in the previous administration, it didn't, it just didn't get completed on time, and so there's going to be an update.
Okay.
Madam Chair, point of order, we, we may want to include this on an agenda item, it's a significant and very important, but it's not on today's agenda, so.
So I was just trying to clarify about the strategic plan, so, okay.
And now let's go to your last, you had number three, right? Roman numeral three. You made corrections there. So this is 2.1, Roman numeral three. As a member or employee of the board, and then out of his or her membership in or employment by the board, correct? Those corrections? Yep. And then now, what are we gonna do with number four? Roman numeral four, I should say. Yes, Mr. Campbell?
We talk about term of office for board members elected during the election. The election commences one week after the certification of the election. So that means that a board member would be seated before January 1?
They said it was a district's plan.
No, it's the board's plan.
I would ask, that's what happened in Jackson. Some other districts, but you got, the majority of the districts in the state of South Carolina, they're seated on January 1, also county council.
Isn't that right?
Yes.
It's non-negotiable, Mr. Campbell, this is state law that you have to be seated. Now, what I'm, what I was about to propose is that we add the following sentence to the policy. The effective date of this change to the beginning of terms will be.
Determined.
Determined, thank you, at a later date. This policy is being put in place to bring it into compliance with state statute.
Say that again?
Okay, so, repeat it there.
Look right up, yeah.
Okay, the effective date of this policy will be determined at a future time.
John, could you say it's local, because Robin's writing it down?
This is all, this is a sentence you're adding to number four?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Can you repeat it, because she was trying to write it at the same time?
I have the, the effective date, the effective date of this policy will be determined.
The change in the policy is being added to conform to state statute.
Thank you, I think that that just, someone reading a policy for the first time would then not think there was a conflict between those two parts. Thank you.
I might add, this conversation level is great, and this should prove why it took six months to come up with this.
I'm sorry, but I didn't get it, because you seemed like you changed your wording.
He did.
He said that, John, I think he said.
The effective date of this, it added to, okay? Added to, the effective date for this policy will be determined at a future time. Change is noted in order to bring the language into compliance with state statute.
So you think you need that second part there?
Yeah. The language is.
The change is noted.
In order to bring.
The change is noted to bring the statute, or, in line with state law. The change is noted to bring this policy. In line.
All right, so any further, that's it with 2.1? All right. And 2.2? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just didn't know with 2.2, Roman numeral 3E, if that's blank? And if so, is it a placeholder? I'm sorry, 2, policy 2.2, Roman numeral 3, letter E, is that a placeholder? And if so, what for? It just might be a typo.
It's just in formatting, it didn't bring down, so it's not a placeholder.
On the next page, we have a G that's.
Right, I'm just double checking, so it's just formatting error?
That's a formatting.
Okay. There are several, I mean, just several letters, and I just didn't know they had placeholders. Okay, thank you.
So they're not, there's no placeholders, they're just formatting errors and.
I think if you make all the changes, you end up with L being the last one. Because a bunch of them are off, the whole section's off.
This is our policy.
Any further comments or corrections on 2.2? Ms. Robi?
I think it's great, we're gonna be doing a self-evaluation. I'm wondering when we are going to develop the instrument, or identify the instrument that will be used for such evaluation.
Well, I would hope soon, but it's not part of the policy. The policy is just committing to.
Okay, I just, I just want to state that it does need to be done.
Ready to go to 2.3? Okay.
I think also in here, number two, we should, John, continually should be changed periodically to go with the, under 2.3, Roman numeral 2, the board will periodically study and evaluate the written policy set that aligns with what we've already made, the change you had earlier.
I hope it's not lost on everyone, that the more often we do this, the less time it takes every time we do it.
We ready to move on to 2.4? Oh, yes, Mr. Ditch?
I'm just questioning why there has to be a policy on Roman numeral 5, A5.
Oh, I want you to move to 2.4, back to 2.4.
We're on 2.4, aren't we?
Yeah, we're on 2.4.
So Roman numeral 5, A5. And it just says, the chair or presiding officer will, shall allow the presenter to complete the presentation before allowing questions from members of the board or where appropriate senior staff members. Why, I mean, why do we have to have a policy? Because there are times when it is more appropriate, I mean, just wondering if that just seems.
Yeah, we had this discussion, well, let them answer, because we, this was discussed there, but.
It was actually left, that it makes sense to have discretion of the chair.
Basically, we felt that by having it in there, it left it, because it's like, and it says "shall," we grappled with the language, it says "shall" instead of "will," so it's not requiring the chair to do something, it's allowing discretion and letting us.
So discretion still.
Yeah, exactly.
The unwritten part, which would have been overkill if we wrote it, was if the presenter asks the chair to allow questions, as the presentation's going on, the chair will allow that, because it's really up to the presenter.
Chair? I'm sorry, guys, but, all right. Roman numeral 6. Just wondering why F was scratched out? Board members and allowed or required staff are not allowed to participate in executive session, so therefore, we are now going to be allowed to participate in executive session by telephone?
Yes, it was, it was advice from Mr. Cartwright, was that members cannot be prohibited from participating electronically in any type of session.
Okay, great, just wanted to make sure that was accurate.
It wasn't accurate, it was not a local.
Dr. Wasneski?
And also, it's removal from this portion of the policy manual was because it was duplicative. It's also indicated under electronic participation. It does cover that in executive sessions, so that's why we removed it from here.
Mr. Strippinger?
Mr. Strippinger?
I thought there was still an outstanding question about board liability for that.
Ms. Cartwright?
That's one of the questions that we're getting clarification from, of the Attorney General's office, and Mr. Strippinger, thank you for your suggestion about that, that's important.
So, so you're asking for, we've asked for clarification on, can you, on whether or not this would be, so we've, right now, it's removed from here because we believe that it is, that it is allowed by law?
No, it is allowed, it is allowed by law, that's in the statute, but what we need to get further clarification on is whether the board has any liability, if there's a breach in the confidentiality in the transmission.
Um, okay. You want to add to that?
So, I understand the question, for the purposes of the first reading, can we say that it's an open issue?
Yeah.
Fine, I just didn't want to surprise anyone.
Yeah. I think that sounds good, Strippin.
Well, I mean, if the board's liable, does that make it?
The question was, if someone calls in from Myrtle's Tavern.
I understand.
Oh, okay.
So I'm liable. All I'm saying is, does that take away the right?
Exactly.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, Dr. Wasneski?
Just to let everybody else that may not know about this conversation outside of the policy committee, there were discussions of whether or not the board would have any liabilities surrounding conversations that were had in executive session with a board member that was participating electronically. And so we were grappling with, how do we create a policy that potentially deals with that liability? So that's what Ms. Cartwright is looking into, so that's why it's still open, is that there might need to be an inclusion of a policy that helps to absorb that liability.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
But I do, I do agree with Mr. Campbell, the ultimate question is, is that what the, what the state law says, I mean, regardless, the question is, we should not be taking the right from the board member, if that's what they want to do. I mean, even in executive session, when we, when we have regular executive session, you could go in there and say something, and I've heard people say, well, it's a liability. So it's a liability, if you ask me, either way, technically speaking.
Mr. Strippinger?
I think technically, you're right, we certainly can't take away a board member's ability to violate the law, however. But my concern was that if we had wording in here that was sufficient to show that the board made every reasonable attempt possible to enforce the confidentiality items mandated by the state law. There are certain things that are mandated to be confidential. We just need verbiage in here that demonstrates, we thought about it, we came up with this policy, it's the best we can do, and it covers our liability, so that if there is a breach, it's not the board's problem. The board did everything it could. It's that individual person's.
It's a sensible question.
Right, and I just wanted to say that, for the record, yeah, I wouldn't talk about nobody violating the law, on the record.
Right, but that's what we're trying to.
Right, 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 yeah, but no, you know, I just wanted to make sure it's clear, I don't want nobody to think, say that, they said on the record that you were, yeah.
See, it seems like we could put the wording in there right now, man.
Right.
Yeah.
We actually have language in there, under electronic participation.
Okay, all right, we'll get there in a minute. Okay. So just leave this out right now. So, any further, we're still on 2.4.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yes, sir?
I think, if it makes anyone feel better until we get the definitive word about that, okay? There is a policy 2.2D that states the board. There is a policy, 2.2D, that states the board shall not be bound in any way by any action or statement on the part of any individual board member. Okay? So, I think that may be a bridge until Wendy gets clarification. It's a complicated issue because of, because of the case law, Elamy Brown, so.
All right, so we're still under, okay, 2.4, any further recommendations, corrections? Just, you know, under here also is the electronic participation, there's others requirements, you know, such as having to be able to hear, blah, blah, blah. We're good on 2.4? All right, 2.5. Ms. Fidrich.
I would just like to have our verbiage consistent, 2.5A says, "The board approved strategic plan," whereas in 2.1, we just decided it was the board's strategic plan. So, I think we should use the common, same verbiage. Is it a board's apostrophe S strategic plan, or a board-approved strategic plan?
Good point, I think, but I'm not sure which way it should be. Do you have a suggestion, Ms. Cartridge?
I just wanted to point out, under policies, at E, strategic plan refers to the Beaufort County School District five-year strategic plan, approved by the board. And then F, strategic governance plan, is the board's apostrophe S plan, manual process by which it governs, manages affairs on a cost-effective basis. So, I mean, in the definitions, it says strategic governance plan of the boards.
So then, it sounds like the first place, we should have it as the board-approved strategic plan, correct?
Yeah, because as counsel has said on more than one occasion, it could be implied that as soon as the board approves something, it becomes the board's.
Yeah, don't you think, from what you've just said? No? So, 2.1, which, was it in 2.1?
Ms. Cartridge. 2.1.
2.4, right?
Yeah.
Ms. Cartridge, could you just read that again, then? The strategic governance manual?
I was looking at the definitions, strategic governance plan, or strategic governance manual, refers to the board's plan, manual, or process by which it governs, manages the BCSD affairs on a cost-effective basis, authorizes superintendent to serve as the BCSD leader, empowers employees to perform and grow, and supports learners in developing potential by providing excellence, education, excellent education is safe and nurturing educational environment. But then in two, the board's core beliefs, mission, and visions are derived from the BCSD strategic plan.
Right.
You know, so it's confusing here.
Well, except for that, if you say that, you're adopting operating and capital budgets, that's not typically in a district strategic plan. The capital and operating budgets, it's more the instruction, all in the goals of the academic achievement. So, it seemed to me that 2.1, Roman numeral two, four, should be the board's strategic governance plan. If I'm reading this because it talks about what you just said.
Cost-effective basis.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Whereas, the one, 2-point, policy 2.5, that we were just discussing, the board-approved district strategic plan.
So, governance.
Right, that's just my thought.
No, I think you're exactly right, after discussion. So, we're saying now on 2.1, 2.4, that the word governance has to be added between strategic and plan.
I think that we should err on the side of over-clarifying, and making sure that we don't have that confusion, yeah, so that's how I see it.
Just a minute, please, Ms. Orshak.
So, to further complicate matters, on the Beaufort County School District website, it is very specifically referred to as the strategic governance policy manual. I think if we put manual instead of plan to discuss our set of policies, it might make that separation a little more clear from the strategic plan, which is that five-year piece. So, just a thought.
In your definition, your definition of strategic governance plan, or strategic governance manual, refers to the board's plan.
Well, the... So then, I'm looking under board governance on the website, and it says, "The strategic governance policy manual." That's how it refers to our policy manual. It doesn't refer to it as a plan, per se, it's not really a plan, it's really more like a manual. And I think that if we confuse the verbiage too much, it might, I think Mrs. Fidrich has a very good point there.
So, we're changing plan to manual, under policy 2.1?
But in your definitions, you have strategic governance plan, or strategic governance manual, you don't have anything in here about a strategic governance policy manual in your current definition. You know, results are set forth and described in the board's strategic governance manual. Performance expectations are set forth and described in the board's strategic governance manual.
So, what would, so can you, what would be your recommendation as the general counsel for the district?
Well, this says, "Your operating capital budget support the board's strategic..."
So, do you think that...
We call it right now, plan or strategic manual, I mean, we need to decide what we're going to call it. Because we don't have policy anywhere.
Well, then, I think we have to decide to have the website aligned with what we call it.
That's the issue.
So, we could change the website.
Correct the website.
Yeah, that's what I would say also, is that that's something that can be changed.
We're only driven by what they call it on the website.
So, what do you think the proper verbiage, Ms. Cartridge, should be on the website?
I think it needs to go with your policy definitions. You have a strategic governance plan, which I guess you outline in your strategic governance manual.
Okay.
That's what your definition says.
Dr. Woznesnyk.
I think the language that's used under 2.1, Roman numeral 2.4, is correct, in that, and we did discuss this, the adopt operating capital budgets and support the board's strategic plan, so that five-year plan that's adopted, what this is saying is that we are going to adopt financial measures that support what's in that plan. So, not necessarily that the strategic plan, I don't know if I'm getting my point across here.
It might be very clear, then, just say, "That support the district's five-year strategic plan."
Well, that's, well, that's in the definitions, though. So, we're getting into the weeds there with the language, I think. If you call it, if you outline the definition in the introduction, you should, I mean, I don't think that that's required, to continually call it a five-year plan, or an approved plan, or anything like that, you give it a name and a title for a reason. But I do think that we should keep them italicized and consistently use the right identifiers for these things. I'm just saying that 2.1, 2.4, is appropriately named a strategic plan, but the one that you pointed out in, what is it, 2.6 that we're on now?
2.5.
2.5, that talks about board-approved strategic plan. That one, I do think, requires discussion. I did look back at 2.1, about the superintendent, so it kind of went to this same conversation, where we refer to the superintendent's responsibilities, and we mentioned the strategic governance plan.
Okay, and I defer to the group that's been working on this for eons, I mean, so, I just think that it does look confusing, and again, I apologize, I didn't have this first sheet when I first was going through this the other night.
It's...
Yeah, I just think we need to be consistent, and err on the side of over-clarification, too.
So, under 2.1...
2.4.
Pardon?
Under 2.1, 2.4.
No, 2.1, 2B, is where I was referring to, that we talk about performance expectations and results established in the strategic governance plan. So, that's where we, again, reference that same language, but it's in regard to the superintendent's job and expectations and things like that, so. Again, I think that goes to 2.5, and why I think that that one is the one that requires attention right now, I think that 2.1, 2.4 is fine.
Right, and not inserting governance.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I think we're, okay, Mr. Dowling?
It's clear that previous boards were perhaps sloppy in the way that they named things, and they adopted names that weren't quite clear enough. Anytime you read a piece of legislation, the first piece of that legislation is a series of definitions. Why can't we publish as page one of the policy manual, and page one of the website, a set of definitions, so that we can differentiate there, the difference between a district's strategic plan, a department's strategic plan, a board's strategic plan, or maybe a platoon's strategic plan? And then let everybody sort that out, instead of debating it here, because we're going to go all day on that. I agree with the need for clarification, I'm just trying to figure out a way to do it.
Yeah, and I think part of it was because the first two pages were not...
They're missing.
Were missing, and so the definitions weren't there. But we're good, so now...
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Cushingberry?
On policy 2.5, so we're putting an apostrophe S under strategic, is it the board, where are we putting the apostrophe S?
I didn't hear that, but...
I mean...
So, when we decide on 2.5A?
Yes, what are we doing with that one?
The board-approved strategic plan, is that correct?
I mean, I have apostrophe under strategic, but...
Was it necessary for approved? I think 2.5 is the same as 2.1, 2.4, I think they're the same thing. I think, yeah, I think you're talking, you know, you're talking...
Apostrophe boards.
So then, I think it's...
Working on the academic plan.
So then, let's make it...
My support for the academic plan of the board. And the other thing is, the manual, how are we going to govern all of it? There's just two things involved.
So, my recommendation would be to make it look like it did in the earlier, so have boards, B-O-A-R-D, apostrophe S, and then have strategic plan italicized like it is previously.
Yes. It's obviously the board, the board obviously approved it.
Will that clear up the disconnect with what's said in the website?
Oh, no, we don't have to take up the word policy. Is that on the...
Ms. Strippinger, and then, go ahead.
I hate when people ask you to go backwards, but I'm going to ask, to go back to 2.3, I forgot to say something, at the bottom of 2.3, 2.3, six, seven, and eight, are all motions that have been made and approved by the board. And I thought we had agreed that when we put motions in the policy manual, that we were going to cite, you know, the meeting that those, that a motion had been approved at, you know, so people could go back and reference. I thought we agreed to that, but if we didn't agree, I would suggest we do that, that when we put motions in, which we are going to do from now on, that we would cite the meeting that that motion passed in, so people could go back and make sure the exact order, and blah, 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 just as we cite state law. And I thought we had agreed to do that.
You did, that could have been an oversight.
Mr. Mike, yeah.
My recollection is that we also agreed, though, that there may need to be supplemental language in order for, not every motion we make will pass a legal litmus test. So, we may have to have additional language in the policy that supports to the word of the motion, but actually clarifies it.
Okay, but I think you're talking apples and oranges again, because what we want, and I believe we also discussed this, was just to put, like, the date of that, of the meeting when that motion was approved by the board, just like you, you know, you said per state law, or whatever it is, per state statutes, just do the same thing.
That shouldn't be done, it hasn't been done yet.
Yep, so, we'll charge Robin for that.
Yes.
And Robin said that she would do that.
So, is there any further discussion about 2.5 now? Ms. Fidrich.
I'm good.
You're good.
I'm over 2.6.
All right, good, we got one we didn't debate. Okay, so now, 2.7, we need the work plan here.
So, that's what you will vote on in September.
Thank you. Now, we're to the 3.1. Ms. Orshak?
I have a question. Yesterday, the board made, there were two motions that had, one was actually to create a policy, I think that was Dr. Woznesnyk's motion, and the other, Mr. Strippinger's motion surely had the makings of a motion. So, as an exercise today, since I'm not sure what the process will be for refining and creating motions in the future, we should perhaps turn those magically into policies today, and insert them in the appropriate sections where they belong, as we go through this process. So, Robin, you were not here, but I'm sure that Molly has those motions and what they were. So, at some point, I'd like to suggest that as we go through these edits today, that they be formed into policies and inserted into the manual. This will be an exercise that we're going to have to do going forward, and today's a great time to start, while those two motions are fresh in our minds, so.
Dr. Woznesnyk.
You're ahead of me on my motion from yesterday, so I was going to try to codify that into 3.6 when we get there.
Exactly, yeah. All right, so, 3.1...
And what was that motion?
It was about the policy for attending out-of-state meetings, basically, right?
That's hers.
Yeah.
No, right. And David was...
No, we're, let's keep going.
Purchasing instructional services.
Yeah.
Purchasing or renewing.
Yeah.
Now, we go on the financial section, which we don't have.
All right, 3.1.
Dr. Guadz, excuse me, if I could just briefly, just briefly for the board, I was just speaking with Ms. Crosby with respect to 2.6, superintendent accountability under four, if the board wishes to hire consultants to assist in selection, they have to follow the procurement process. The procurement code was, it has to go through the out-of-state process.
And tell us, we can, where you are, 2.6, Roman numeral four.
2.6, number four, where it says, "It may hire consultants to assist." I just want to clarify, it must be done through the procurement process. I don't know if you all want that in there or not, but I just...
No, I wouldn't want it in there, because that might change.
It has to be done with the procurement process, but I don't think it's necessary to, knowing the policy that exemption has been taken away, the given is that all procurement will be done according to...
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
So, going back, now, we're at 3.1, do we have any... So, let's see, going back, now we're at three point one, do we have any, any anything is on three point one? All right. Oh yes, go ahead.
I just, just for clarification of this, it says that, let's see, what, number one, two? No. Number two. It says appoint a parliamentarian, we should have the duties and responsibilities. I mean, so that is policy that we are supposed to have a parliamentarian on the board? Okay. And then I was going to question about roman numeral four, the secretary's responsibilities, take responsibility for the to do list. Do we have a published to do list? I mean, we have, it says take
I know, I'm not aware of it either.
For, the secretary will take responsibility for the to do list and the minutes of the board meetings, ensure the to do list is kept up to date and available to board members, and sign and date all minutes after approval. So I, what is a to do list?
The to do list was, oh, actually, I, do, go ahead. I believe the to do list is things that the, the secretary for the board, basically things that I guess he needs to be done, or things that the board wanted done, and those were things that he had, he would put his to do list, I can imagine, and those are the things that he would come back and do for the board, I believe. That's what the to do list, but I can turn it over to Ms. Orshak.
I do think we need to tighten up the language, it's very vague, but I would imagine a series of requests that come in from board members, or, you know, let's say somebody says there's a correction, you know, to this, or remember we said we were going to address this last month, keeping track of all of that input coming from the board. But I agree, we have to tighten up that to do list very
Mr. Dowling?
We discussed this at the agenda setting meeting for the work session, and I believe Mr. Smith volunteered to keep a list, tracking list of all outstanding agenda requests. That to me was the major part of the to do list, when you add that to the work plan.
Yeah, I did, that's right, I sure did, yeah, I did, yeah. So, so you want to put the, so that, I guess, that will be the to do list part.
Okay, so is it to do list available to board members? I mean, we, is this a published document that, that is sent, I mean, just, if it's going to be in the policy, again, I, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Everybody has to know what that to do list means, ten years from now. Then just take it up, then, yes?
Well, but is it a critical function?
And honestly, that, right now, the, when people make corrections, there are several of us that tend to make corrections to the meeting minutes, I just send them to Robin, but then copy at least the, the officers and/or the board, depending on what it is. You know, if the word is of to for, or something like that, I don't bother copying everybody, but if I think the vote was wrong, or something like that, I copy people, so it depends, you know? So, William, I don't think you are actually the one to correct the minutes, are you? I mean, like, you don't, I mean, it's Robin that's going to actually correct. If, if, if board members present corrections, you're physically not doing it, I mean, you can pass it on to Robin, but it seems like going to Robin for the corrections is just streamlining it, but what the board wants.
Well, yeah, but at the same time, someone on the board is supposed to be accountable for that. That's, 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 that's the, that's the point of it. Yeah, we have, maybe the system hasn't been working like that, but that's how, that's how it should be going, that's how it should work correctly, that's the correct system and function of it.
So I think the to do list, maybe the word, the categorizing it as a to do list sounds kind of funny. All right, Ms. Robine, and then Mr. Strickland?
I would suggest that we make it as specific as possible, define what we mean by a to do list, and take out the word to do list and add what the expectation is, so whoever the secretary has a clear idea of what exactly is to be done.
Mr. Strickland?
I would suggest we rename that follow up items, to take it off the refrigerator and put it into the board, to do list scope on the refrigerator. I think we could make a, thank you. You know, just call it a follow up list, because, I mean, Ms. Robine does that a lot in her vacations, and says, you know, this is what we have to do, I think that, that would
Call it a follow up list?
All right, follow up items.
Chair? And so, you know, the reason I'm being so literal about this and so on, this is our policy, and so someone, let's say, in two years wants to run for secretary, what are the duties and responsibilities, and what, I mean, and also, we have to hold each other accountable to what is in this policy and what should be getting done. So I, I think this needs to really be addressed.
Oh, I'm with you on that. All right, I think, Mr. Dowling, and Dr. Wazniewski?
In order to capture the outstanding agenda item requests, because items cannot be always accommodated when they're requested, could we, instead of calling it just follow, could we call it an outstanding items list? And that way, we can have follow ups and agenda requests.
So we're going to remove to do and put down outstanding items?
And follow, and follow.
That's quantitative, not qualitative.
Right, well, you said outstanding, and you said two things, then you said, you said two things, huh?
And follow.
And follow, right.
Any, anything that needs follow up is by definition an outstanding issue.
Yeah, exactly.
I thought you said two things, I thought you said
He's asking you, did you say two things?
No, I said outstanding items.
Okay.
So I, so, strike to do and insert outstanding items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chair?
And then that would obviously have to be done a second time in that, in four A.
Right. And so what does it mean to say, take responsibility for the outstanding, the list of outstanding items and the minutes of the board meetings? What, what does that mean?
Ms. Orshak?
Well, doesn't it, isn't the secretary's signature on the minute? Do you sign the minute well?
No, I, I have, I have, I have not, not been signing the minutes, but it is, it is, it has been required of me to sign the minutes, but, no, I, at first, when I first took the position, I was told that I didn't need to sign anything, and they was going to tell me to sign when I first got it, so ever since then, I hadn't really actually been signing anything.
That's not true.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, yeah.
Correct, that's not true.
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that in the back of approved minutes, it has the signature block for the board secretary.
Yes, it does.
Well, I haven't signed any, any, any documents.
We're getting off topic, but it's, it's been an issue that's been addressed repeatedly. And the signature does not go on to the website, so, you know, people can't fraudulently use your signature. But in order for the minutes to become official, the signature, your signature is required on there, and none of the ones since January have been signed.
And see, I think that that is why this is crucial work, it needs to be absolutely stated in the policy what those responsibilities are, and not have nebulous verbiage in there.
Well, it does say sign and date all minutes after approval, and that's not being done.
May I suggest that we provide the statutory citation for that particular item that shows it's state law to have to sign the minutes, not just a local, homegrown policy.
Ms. Orshak?
Just a question, and if I missed it in the manual here, forgive me, is there a policy of the recently implemented, the board requires the external signatures by the chair report, is that in policy? It is? Okay, it is, it is in there, thank you. So, Robin, just a note, some of the legal invoices are external documents signed by the chair. We need to receive that on the reports each month. What's that?
Say that again, the legal
The, the legal invoices are signed by the chair, and as such, they're external documents, and they need to be included in that monthly report.
Okay, you mean when she pays the bill, you want that?
Well, I just know some of the invoices that we recently received as copies, as board members, the chair's signature is on that, and the board policy demands that on a monthly basis, we get that report of all external documents signed by the chair, not internal, we're not talking about traffic, you know, bondage reports.
So tho, those documents are the bills, so you're, that's what I'm asking, so when we pay, we pay the bills, you're wanting to see copies of the invoice?
No, on the report.
On the invoice, no, what I'm asking is, to be on the report, where you say the chair's signature is on the invoices, the legal invoices, those are the invoices that they bill us, so you're asking for me to put the invoices on that report because she is signing saying it's okay to pay?
Anything that is signed, that it, by the chair, that is an external document, and that would certainly qualify, can't imagine it wouldn't, would be on the report. Obviously, we won't get those invoices, we have to come to you to see them, but it would at least be on the report, correct? And I just wanted to point that out while we were on this topic, thank you.
Mr. Dowling, Mr. Campbell?
It's policy two point three, roman numeral eight, and I would also consider an external bill from an external vendor to be an external document.
I think some of those are not going to be able to be, you can, they can be reviewed as they were, like, for example, in executive session, they, they can't just be, you know, sent out via email and distributed that way. Am I correct, Mrs. Cartledge? Like, for example, some of those that I've signed are, are attorney-client privileged information, so Ms. Cushenberry can't have those documents in her file for distribution via email or anything.
If it's attorney-client privileged and has to be redacted, but you can look at them in executive session and review everything.
Boy, you're cutting to the office.
I think we veered away from the policy and we're talking about implementation, so I think we should get back on the policy.
I have a question.
Manager?
I think Mr. Campbell was before you.
So you're telling me, this is August, and none of our minutes have been signed?
That is correct, sir, and I have personally tried to assist that.
We, we're talking about implementation here, I think Mr. Strickland
That was brought up, and if, if the minutes are not signed, then that's a violation. If that's the secretary's job, and they won't sign it, then he needs to sit down.
I would suggest we put that on the outstanding list.
Yeah, there we go. All right, I think Mr. Dowling's next.
I, I just have a question to help anyone who has a question about that in terms of voting for this policy, so I think it is relevant, even if it may be slightly off topic, and that's, we have, we have equal opinions on that. I would ask Mrs. Cartledge, when we get a bill from a lawyer, the name of the lawyer is on the bill, and the amount to be paid is on the bill, right? That is not protected information, is it? It's only when they disclose case information, correct?
We can't disclose their attorney-client communications that are described in the bill, that's right, sir.
All right, so the members of the board can receive a copy of the invoice that's been signed, knowing who it went to and for how much, right? Then they can raise a question if they've got a concern about what it was for, okay? But the whole document itself is not attorney-client privileged, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it is only the protected information.
If I may, on the policy with respect to duties, the board chair and the secretary, I understand, sign off on the bond document? Yeah, and that's not here, we should put that in there.
I think we say on all documents required by state law, it's in the policy.
And for the record, they have I signed off on those, Madam Chairman? On the, for the record, have I signed off on those?
Yes, you have.
Okay, wow, thank you.
Ms. Orshak?
I just want to clarify, the policy that we have doesn't say anything about distributing invoices, it doesn't say that, we got way off topic there. All the policy says is, we get a monthly list, just a list, of every external document. We don't have to distribute anything via email, there's nothing that says we even need to be discussing that, discussing that right now. It's just a list, and it should be including legal documents with the chair's signature on it, not the documents themselves, but a citation that it was signed. And then, if board members want to look at them, we know where to go. So that's, so I didn't want anybody to confuse what the policy actually said.
Okay, all right, so anything, so under, so it seems like, under number four, secretary, we're going to say take responsibility for the outstanding items list, and the minutes to the, of the board meetings, ensure the outstanding items list is kept up to date, up to date and available to board members, and sign and date all minutes after approval, correct? That was the corrections. Anything further there? All right.
What, what does B mean in red, that's in red? What does it mean to keep a permanent record, other than that which is kept on video? I mean, so with the board's executive assistant, keep a permanent record of all proceedings of the board, so does that mean you have to keep an extra copy?
No, what that, what that means is that I believe, reading it, is that, when it says keep with a permanent record, I believe that we, that we should be working together on that, or I should, we should be corresponding on, on, on that, that, I believe that's the correction, the correct function. Right, but I'm telling you, when I read it, that's, that's the correct function of that position, but that's not, has been the functioning of that position, since you know, since we want to be technical out here today.
Well, how are you defining it?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what Ms. Pedrigs is asking.
Well, I'm asking the committee that works on this to tell us.
I was there, self-explanatory, that's, that is self-explanatory.
I think it means that we're keeping
It says with, with mean two people, with the board's executive assistant, I mean, assistant, keep, it says, right, it says, that's what it says.
Ms. Cushenberry?
In, in the meetings, what it says is, with the board's executive assistant, I keep all permanent documents of the minutes, I keep all permanent documents of the tapes and recordings, so those documents are kept with me or in the board's, in the board secretary's office. So that's how that has been defined, that all permanent records, the recordings, the audios, and the minutes are kept there.
Okay, and this is put under the secretary's responsibilities, can someone make the link for me? I'm not trying to be obtuse here, I'm just trying to understand our board policies. This is under the secretary's responsibility, so I'm trying to understand the link.
Because normally, the secretary and the executive assistant normally work together, that's how it's been in the past. That, that, that's normally the procedures, but due, due to some difficulties, things have, some things have changed.
Okay, okay, so I'm just wondering about the wording, then?
Yeah, so, so that's the, that's the connection.
Rachel, I'm sorry.
I'm going to try to give, give maybe a little bit of clarity. If we were a board that didn't have an executive assistant, the secretary would be responsible for keeping a permanent record of everything. So, because we have an executive assistant, they work in concert to fulfill that responsibility.
So it's concert with?
That's why with is, they work together in concert, so with the executive assistant, Will and her are responsible and tasked with that.
I think currently, tell me if this is correct, I think currently, since we do have an executive assistant, that she takes responsibility for keeping the permanent record of all proceedings of the board.
Correct.
Right?
He's, he's kind of the board oversight for that.
Right, yeah, yeah, so he could, the secretary, I guess, needs to, well, make, is, is, does this mean that the secretary is supposed to just check and make sure it's done?
Correct. Correct, correct. She, the secretary is supposed to make sure that it's done. That's the correct, yes, that's correct.
So do you want to make a suggestion for changing the wording, or, or leave it the way it is?
I think the word, I think the wording is fine according to the position. I think Rachel, Dr. Uneski just explained it finally. And I, and like she said, that is the secretary's job to do oversight regards to who the secretary of the board is. So that, and therefore, that is the secretary's responsibility, regardless to whether the board has an executive assistant. So we put it there for the position and not the person. That's the correction function of that, that position.
All right, I got a good suggestion. We're at least halfway through. Let's go take a five-minute break, and then we'll start back on 3.2. All right, we're back on to, Board Committees, 3.2.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question about, before we move on to 3.2, about 3.1?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, Roman numeral four, C. Sign all documents and contracts as required by board policy or law. I mean, just, I just want, just the way it reads, the way it reads to me, you know, or law. I'm just wondering, is that, do we ever have board policies that are not law?
We don't, yep.
That are not in line with law, I mean, you know.
No, for example, let's say the, for example, the bond documents that come to the district, those both, Mr. Smith and I have to sign, and it's, it's already formatted by law that way. And, yeah.
And then just lastly, supervise and ensure the annual evaluation of the executive assistant. I thought in the previous, where it talked about the board chair, the board chair is a supervisor. How many, I mean, don't we only have one person supervised, or do we have more than, we have two supervisors? And I'm sure, guys, I know you talked about this in committee, but I just think it's court with all of us.
I believe it's the secret, I believe the secretary does, ensures the process, okay? And that the chair ensures the discussion and, and action of the, of the, the valuation.
Sorry about the valuation.
I think, as I recall the conversation, that's the way, no?
Well, it does as the annual evaluation, that's the secretary's.
Well, there, so look back at the wording. So, exactly, so under two, let's see, 3.1, Roman numeral two, then we're down to, thank you, L. Okay, so this is the chair's responsibility, supervise the executive assistant to the board, and ensures that an annual performance evaluation is conducted by the board.
Okay.
And then under secretary, Roman numeral four, we have E, supervise and ensure the annual evaluation of the, yeah, so how are, how are those different?
I'll explain.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So what this is saying is that the chair is tasked with the general supervision of the executive assistant to the board, and that the chair will ensure that an annual performance evaluation is conducted by the board. So you ensure that the, that it actually gets conducted, you schedule whatever. Now, when you go down to secretary and you look at those responsibilities, you supervise, the secretary is responsible for the supervision and ensuring the annual evaluation. So it's not the executive assistant that is being supervised and evaluated, it's the evaluating process. So that's the way it's.
Right, okay. So I just want to make sure, so I just want to, you know, make sure, so, so the executive assistant has one supervisor? The chair?
Yes.
Got you, okay.
He supervises, the secretary supervises the evaluation.
Just that, right.
Ms. Barsha.
And it would, it would be a deviation from policy. This has been policy for a very long time, to have any other individual participate in these two activities, so.
Okay, okay.
Are you good with that?
Okay, so now we're on 3.2, the board committees.
Quick question.
Which section are you on, Will?
I'm on the, I'm on the same section.
Okay, so 3.1, secretary duties or whatever?
No.
You're, you're good, okay. So now we're to 3.2, the board committees. So I have a question, and I think I was there even. So under, it would be 3.2, number nine, C. So it basically sets a process for how, how an agenda, an item gets on the agenda by an individual board member. And it looks like this is copied too from the, the, how an item gets on to the agenda by the, an individual member for the full board meeting, right? But, but the, but when an agenda item comes to the officers, they help delegate to where that agenda item should go. So to me, it seems like this now is eliminating that. That's one way I would look at it. And, you know, it says one, the last sentence is, once the determination has been made by the committee chair, the chair is only notifying the board member for the plan. But the, the committees are to be working for the, the full board. So I just see, that's kind of the way I read this. I don't know what other people think. Go ahead, Dr. Wozniowski.
So it was a copy and paste, because we were trying to follow that same protocol. I think the confusion may be in that first sentence, where it says, any board member may request the topic or matter be included on a future board agenda. That's supposed to say committee agenda. It's not supposed to say board agenda. Does that make more sense?
So, so the, the officers are not deciding, like when the requests come to the officers, this sort of similar verbiage. So, and as I recall, in that verbiage, it, it says, you know, that, that the officers are going to decide, you know, you know, which meeting it goes to. Does it go to the board meeting a month from now? Does it go to a committee meeting? Does it, so this kind of eliminates that? Or am I not looking at it correctly?
No, it's still, right. So if you go to the very beginning of nine, you have A, B, C, E, and F. And basically, what the intention was, was to give a couple different routes for how items could be placed on committee agenda. on committee agendas. So, one is it can be initiated by the superintendent, or A, excuse me. B, it could be assigned to the committee by the board chair. C, any board member can make an agenda item request to the committee. And then also, I believe that should, E should be D, I think that's an error there.
I'm sorry, which one?
Because D's blank.
Oh, so that's, yeah. The lettering has to be changed there, yeah.
And then items can also be originated for discussion by the committee, I should say, pursuant to, the committee's approved scope, and consent was taken out with the board officers and superintendent. So it gives the option, it gives multiple different avenues for getting an item on a committee agenda, but it lays them out in various succinct ways.
Thank you, Mr. Dowling.
Yeah, just to build on that, the concept was, is that committees, as far as policy goes, operate as a microcosm of the full board. So what a board chair does, the committee chair does, what the board offices do, the committee members do. If you try to think of it in those terms, it becomes, it becomes a lot simpler. All right.
So Ms. Orshak, and Mr. Strippinger.
I move to strike, Roman numeral 10, matters passed in committee by majority vote of the committee members shall be placed on the consent agenda at the next scheduled board meeting.
I thought it was struck.
Yeah, I think it was too, because.
I think that's in there by mistake.
Is it a mistake? Okay, good, glad to hear it, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm reading it off my, I think it was.
But it's in there nonetheless, I would support striking.
Yeah, because we have only three members to a committee, and so, you know, that's really not close to a board majority. Okay. Ms. Strippinger.
I'm still a little confused about this C. We're saying that any board member can request that the committee add an item to their agenda. Is that true?
Yes, but that's why that one's probably a little bit longer than others, because it prescribes the manner in which they need to go about doing so, just like they would for any other agenda item on a regularly scheduled board meeting. So, except it goes through the, the committee chair.
Yeah, I, philosophically, that's opposed to my view of the board directing the committee.
Will they still?
Help me.
You're kind of asking what I was.
Yeah.
Mr. Dowling.
Yeah, I believe that committees work for the board, and how they do that is performed within the scope that the board approved for their work.
Right, so, to go along with that, what concern, what specific concerns do you have with an individual board member asking or following this?
I always envisioned the board member would go to the full board, say, "I think we need to deal with this issue. I want it on an agenda." And the board chair would say, "This belongs to the committee," as opposed to going right to the committee chair, which kind of bypasses the board. I mean, I realize eventually it gets to the board, but it's just a philosophical question. The committee works for the board, so I've always envisioned that a board member would come to the full board and say, "I'd like this issue dealt with." And then the full board would say, "This belongs in that committee," as opposed to the committee making us to see. And that prevents committees from kind of going rogue.
Well, that's why we have an approved scope, though.
Yeah, I know, the scope is very broad, you know, so, and, you know, it's, it's a philosophical question, and, you know, I couldn't, I wouldn't agree with this, but I'm just disagreeing, that's all.
So, let's see, Mr. Dowling, and then Mr. Campbell, and then Ms. Orshak.
No, I, did I hear you say you don't, you don't agree with it, but you don't disagree? Is that what you, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying, I keep agreeing with this, that we, we're going to disagree on this.
Yeah, okay, because, Mr. Otting, Mr. Otting doesn't come to the full board to ask for agenda items on the operating committee, he responds to your email asking for agenda items. That, I think, is working as a microcosm, microcosm of the full board, as long as we're in.
He's on the committee, he's a liaison to the committee, not a good comparison.
Why have, why did we have scopes approved if the committee chairman are not empowered to decide whether an item is within that scope or not? Because if you have somebody coming to the board to request permission to get an agenda item onto a committee, you were asking the board to revalidate that committee's scope every time you do that, and you're adding a month out of the process.
Okay, Mr. Campbell, Ms. Orshak, Ms. Duffield.
That was, that was my concern too, Mr. Strippinger, going rogue, but we've got a lot of things built in there to avoid that, but I also understand that sometimes we're working intercommittee, you know, things, directives that really don't have time, or in order to fulfill your task, you may need to have another committee investigate something, and that maybe don't need to go to the full board, or wait until the full board meets to be, you know, something that we can address from underneath. That was the reason for it, but I, I was concerned about, you know, just agenda items coming from any which way, and not, thus being kept to the scope, yeah.
Ms. Orshak.
I, I want to help alleviate this irrational fear that committees can somehow go rogue. Okay, committees are powerless, we can vet, we can discuss, we can recommend, we can decide or determine virtually nothing, so that fear needs to just be put away. The committees are here, I have confidence, our committees are here to work for the board, that's, that's how I see it. I don't see the, the power struggle there, the rogue opportunities. It's inappropriately placed in regard to how we have our committees structured.
Hold on, no, I think it was Dr. Wozniowski, I recall.
Oh, they, they.
No, they're already wet, sorry, you're right, Mr. Smith.
Well, and along with that, I want to address a thing about committee chairs. One, to me, it seems like there's an ego on this board, because at the end of the day, we are all elected officials, period. The job of the chair, the, the job of the chairman of the board should be no different than the chair of a committee, except that the chair runs an oversight of the, of the, of the meetings when we're, when we're having meetings, but no member on this board has no more authority within no other member of this board. That's the, that's the reality of it. We all had to do the business of the children, and alter, alter, make, make sure that we have oversight of this district, to even bring it home closer. So, no position really has no, no other authority, including mine and the chair. We both have, certain documents she signs off on by herself, on certain documents I sign, I sign along with her. I, I signed along with her on certain documents, but other than that, we have no other, no other power or authority than, than, than no other one on this board, we are all elected officials. And I just think that we need to get past that. I, I just want to put that out there, because I keep hearing about the chairs, this chairs, that. Listen, we trust each, we trust each other. If the chair, put them as the chair of these, of these, of these, of these committees, let them work.
Dr. Wozniowski.
So hopefully, this will help to alleviate the concern about these items that are being referred by any board member, being routed through the traditional process. So, we kept the same language as other agenda items for regular board meetings, where it says, "This request should be made via email to the committee chair and courtesy copy to the full board." So there is no lack of transparency with regard to a board member making a request to go to a committee. Everybody will know about it once it's made. So if there's objections to it, they certainly can make it, because if you look at the next sentence, you know, receipt of the request will be acknowledged by the committee chair and courtesy copy to the full board. So the chair also is required to acknowledge receipt of that request. So, there are mechanisms in place to prevent anything from getting on a committee agenda, agenda that shouldn't be there. It's, it's fully transparent to the entire board of what someone's request may encompass.
I guess, my comments would be, I understand exactly what you just said, and I think you're, that's a good explanation. Some, some topics, you know, it's, it's not clear whether, or it's going to be actually reviewed by two committees as opposed to just one, so that would be a preference then to go through the officers to be assigned to whichever committee first, et cetera. And in, in response to Ms. Orshak's comments about a committee going rogue, the thing is too, you've got a scope, and we don't want you wasting your time on, on an issue. I mean, that's another, I'm not just saying, I don't think I use the word rogue, but, that we don't want, you know, the committees are trying to do the board's work, so we could be more efficient, and so we don't want a request that, even if it's within the scope, that it's, I don't want to say a time waster, but you know what I mean, we want to be doing, you know, efficient work too. Mr. Dowling.
If it's within the scope, if it's within the scope that was approved by the committee, it cannot by definition be a time waster. Granted, some items are more important than others in terms of urgency or what have you, but the message is this, if it's in the scope, the board said, you can do it. So I don't think they should be having filters that, and gauntlets that topics have to run before they can get on the agenda if they're in the scope. And that's why committee chairmen were appointed to be chairpersons, to use that judgment about whether it fits the scope.
And ultimately, it's going to come back to the board anyways, the committee is not making the final decision.
So, I don't, I don't believe in anybody's judgment about whether we're wasting time or not. We don't, we don't waste time if we're conscientious about the questions and concerns that we bring up. We all have different motivations, and we all have different questions to ask. So if somebody feels like we're trying to waste their time, that's on them.
Ms. Robine.
I think that this gives some ability to the chair to make a decision, you know, yes, this is something we can put on our agenda right away, or, gosh, our next, we're working on these big projects, and our next, I'm thinking of the academic committee, you know, our next big things in line are this. And, yes, this is something that should be addressed by the academic committee, but we can't have five pots boiling at the same time and give them all the diligence that they need. So I, you know, I think this allows for the chair of the committees to say, "Yeah, I hear you, good boy, but, you know, not right now because of our other pots that are boiling." So, that, that's just my feeling about it, I think it does give the chair the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Mel Campbell.
I'm confused on which chair you're talking about. But, yeah, I know. But, but, yeah, I, I consider it's both ways, I, you know, in terms of the board's direction, which is, which is driven by, by a D-chair, the board's direction, so that's why the little things have to be filtered to make sure we're staying on course as a board, or else we do get splintered, and maybe rogue is not the right word, but we do get splintered in other directions, and we abort the correct direction of working cohesively to get something done. And that's, that's what my concern is in terms of, you know, my concern was, a lot of this was not written, and my concern was people just continually pounding the committee chairs with information desires, or with a directed, you know, approach to something that they may feel like important, but we've not, you know, justified that it is that important. So a lot of those things, you know, is why we wrote all this stuff in there, which means we can't go anywhere unless everybody knows where we're going, at least.
Correct, Mr. Dowling.
I think we offer committee chairs a course on how to say no. If they're, if they're being bonboned, if they don't have to say yes, I'll do it.
All right, are we good with that discussion? Any, any more? Okay, let's go to, thank you for your explanation, so, policy 3.3. You don't see any red or yellow, or, there's no, there are no changes from this one.
Now we're to 3.4, board member.
Board member conduct.
Oh, sorry. On 3.3, the finance committee is looking at, or we will be looking at, a revised plan in regard to looking at our budget, and I guess this is a question for Tanya. When the board revises that, will that have an impact on the 3.3 annual plan and all of our PEs? Will that, I've never looked at that. So there may, there may or may not be a potential for change here, I don't think.
There may or may not, there is an item on the board work plan for budgeting. I can't recall what timeframe it is, but we could certainly, I want to say it may be March, so, I'm not sure, I mean, the budget process is so, encompasses several months' time, so I'm not sure where the best place to put that is.
Okay, so we're tentatively having that on our September finance.
Right, we can put a copy of the work, existing work plan on the finance committee for discussion when we, along with the revised budget calendar.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, now we're to 3.4. Anybody want to comment? I will. So, you know, I know each of us is elected individuals, it just seems like any organization has some kind of, I don't want to say, I guess you'd say a code of conduct. My concern too is that if we have no code of conduct, or very minimal code of conduct, or however you want to say it, that, you know, we want to attract and retain high-quality staff. And I think if board members can, you know, are not held to some kind of standard of conduct, that that will be impossible, or we won't be able to attract the employees that we want to. And I think that goes hand in hand with 3.5 is, you know, how are we supposed to?
There is no 3.5.
I know, so, so how are we supposed to handle any grievances, and we all know this just came up.
The answer?
Yes, sir.
The answer is we can't, and it's been established by, this is college, that board members have no authority over each other. And most, most groups do have codes of conduct, almost every organization does, except organizations of elected individuals.
Well.
There's continuing, there's continuing desire for peer pressure on the board on how to behave, what people's style is, how they talk. That is just only between the individual and the district that elected. I, we had, I was on other boards, and the biggest KIA in the district got elected to the board, and the board was saying, "How do we muzzle this guy?" "Can't." Because we do not, we do not check our freedom of speech at the door. And since everything we utter at the table is political talk, then it's protected. And it's, to me, it's just no question, is the mantra, the best quote I ever read about it was from Bill Rogers, South Carolina Press Association, and the quote is this, "Sorry, boys and girls, local audiences do not trump the first amendment." And it's just something, like or not, we have to live with.
So I'd let Ms. Cardledge answer that, because I respectfully disagree with your assessment by state statute. Do you want the board members to go first?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think Dr. Wozniowski, then Ms. Orshak.
Mr.
Earl Campbell. Earl Campbell.
So I'm just gonna make one differentiation. The difference, there's a difference between a process of board members trying to censure others because they don't like their conduct or the way that they are conducting themselves. And then there's a difference between employee matters or administrative matters. And right now, as it exists, we do not have a policy in dealing with that. And that is something that I do feel we need to address. But it's my understanding that 3.5 wasn't necessarily encompassing or even addressing that issue. So to his, to Mr. Dowling's point, we don't have any authority to really censure each other. But if there is a violation of a policy that affects others, there should be something in place for that, a way and manner in which we, we handle that, a process. We don't have that policy. And that's why I think things have been a little cloudy recently.
Ms. Orshak.
So the board is very divided on this matter about censuring or whether we can, you know, moderate each other. And so rather than all of us go through all of our philosophical positions on this, I would suggest that those with particularly strong feelings come up with a policy, put a motion on the floor that might help us to sidestep or avoid the recent matter, the grievances.
And I was, when we were in our policy committee meeting, we discussed...
Can you turn on your, I don't think it's on.
It's on. I think I need to speak louder. But when we were in our policy committee meeting, one of the things that we discussed was that I was to write, and I did, write a letter to the Attorney General to seek clarification because the board received, actually, Mr. Davis received a letter from the Attorney General in February of 2016 that Mr. Dowling's correct talked about. There wasn't that authority there to discipline a board member. And then after that, subsequent to 2016, there have been some other opinions that have been issued by the Attorney General that have a different result. And so what I did was, I have, I looked at all these different opinions and the, there's great variety in these opinions, but we did receive the opinion in March from the Attorney General. That had to do with the closing, whether the superintendent had the authority to close Island's Academy. And in there, that opinion letter said that the, that duties were vested in the board as they were custees, that they did have authority, whereas that was different from the opinion that we got in 2016. So I've sent that letter requesting that clarification. And then also, the other thing that has come up recently that you all are aware of is that statute about removal of a board member too. So that's a statute that talks about removing for cause, and there must be notice and an opportunity to be heard. So I also asked for clarification about that, whether that pertains to us. So I just wanted you all to know that...
So it seems like maybe the best option then would be wait on this section and the...
Yes, I just also want to say this too, is that we do have the right to free, that people, it's hard being in this country, we do have the right of free speech and we have the right to express our opinions. We have the right to, you know, respectfully disagree with each other. We, we do have the right to free speech and that is something we're very fortunate to have in this country, so.
Mr. Dowling.
I'd just like to point out to everybody that 3.5 should not even be in here. It was formally revoked by the board in April of 2018. It's not a suggestion that we're making to get rid of it. It's gone already. So it should not be listed here. There is no Policy 3.5. It was, it was removed by the board in April of 2018. By a motion.
Mr. Strigman.
Joseph Dunkel.
It's true, I was just saying what Mr. Dowling said was, but that was a little while ago. And if we don't have, if we don't clear up this 3.5 one way or the other, whether we can or we can't, if there's no enforcement on the policies, then what are the policies? They're, they're guidelines. And we should just say, okay, they're, they're not enforceable, they're guidelines, because we keep recycling on the same arguments. Some of them are philosophical arguments and hopefully the Attorney General will resolve that so we don't have to be philosophical. So I would suggest also that we just skip over this section until we get an updated opinion from the Attorney General.
And I didn't realize it was revoked at that meeting, so thank you.
And it's maybe we'd need, since it's revoked, maybe need new policy pending what the latest is from the Attorney General. Mr. Dowling.
The idea in all the opinions is twofold. One, that the, I believe, I believe it's called a rough and tumble political discourse, is that if you look at what's been struck out of this code of conduct, what we basically struck were the social morbid norms that are not enforceable. If someone on this board or out there thinks that someone is not talking nice enough, it's irrelevant. It's irrelevant. Nobody has, nobody has the right to inflict that on us. The most, according to the current theory, the most important, the only thing the board can do is send a letter of disappointment to a board member and say, gee, we, we wish you didn't do that. And that's all you're saying really is, we don't like you. Now, there are many things in this code of conduct that do not hinge at all on what we've just been discussing. And I think they ought to be dealt with today. I don't think we ought to pass on the total board member of conduct. There's items in here that were just unanimously, without discussion taken out. And I think we should consider those and not pass over on the whole thing. And I know that people's opinions change. We had people who last year thought that we didn't have any authority over each other and now suddenly instinctly think that we do. So I think it might be helpful to wait until we get from Mrs. Cottledge and also from, if Mrs. Cushingberry is successful in arranging the workshop with the Attorney General's office, perhaps we can get some really situational guidance around that instead of all of your fluff, which unfortunately most of the documents contain.
Ms. Orsh, I think Mr., yeah, Ms. Orshak and then Mr. Campbell, did you want to speak?
Well, wait, Ms. Orshak will go first.
So how do you put teeth to these? How do you ensure compliance? If I all of a sudden decide I'm going to do Mr. Smith's job and evaluate our executive assistant, which is against board policy, where are the teeth coming from? Is this what we're investigating? How to put teeth? How to scold and, and discipline our fellow board members when they don't follow the existing policy? We're going to be awfully busy. There's a lot of broken policy going on. And I, I don't mean that to criticize, but it's, it's there. So we have to be very careful. We are not just picking and choosing the people we want to discipline.
Mr. Campbell.
I, I, you know, I, I understand, you know, we cannot stop someone from saying something. But I think when, when it interrupts the operation of this board, there has to be something that can be, be done. They do it in the House of Representatives. If, if you act up like a fool, then you don't get served on any committee. You know? And, and the board can do the same thing, you know? And, and I, I'm, I'm serious about what I'm saying because we all had that on, on, on this school board. People act a fool. You know? And, you know, it's up to the chair or someone to make a recommendation that they don't serve on any committees, that they cannot act like they're supposed to act. Because I mean, you know, everybody has an opinion, but you don't have to be a nut about it, you know? Because the people that elect you, if you still act a fool, they'll, they'll get rid of you. But, but there has to be some type of, of behavior on, on, on a school board. So, you know, that's my, my, my thing.
Mr. Noel Campbell.
I agree with you to agree on that, that there, there's a certain expectation. But on the other hand, if someone is voted in by a, a group of people who don't really adhere to that, that person can be voted in every year. And there's nothing we can do about it in terms of getting him off because he was voted in by a certain one of the constituency. And that's, that's what's going on now in our, in our Congress and in our, our Senate. Many people doing things that you would not, you know, approve of if you're looking at from an ethical standpoint, but they're elected, they're officials that you can't move them out unless, you know, you, you know, and I say our oversight in terms of that is the Ethics Committee Commission. The Ethics Commission, the State Ethics Commission recognize whether you've broken ethical rules enough to be removed from office.
Ms. Orshak and Mr. Dowling.
So I have a legal question. Let's say, you know, this is a what-if scenario. You have a board who has a problematic board member. This is what we're discussing, one or more problematic board members. Is it, would it be legal to vet them privately? Would it be, for example, run a background check? Is that legal?
Well, here's, here's what we need to address as, as a board, and I, I want to work with you all on this, is that we need to determine, well, you all need to determine as a board is what you want to do when there's a violation. I've been looking at what some of the other districts do and, you know, we can talk about this at another time, about procedures. We're going to have to, we're going to need to figure out a way that we address our violations and problems that exist. But I, I just want to talk to you all about something that Tanya just gave to me because I was, I was not aware of this until just now. So I just want every, I just want to make sure that all the new board members are aware of it. So, Mr. Dowling, when we were in our policy committee, we talked about when we change policies, we amend our policies, we go for three readings and, but that we were suggesting in the proposed revisions that we would have it be in two readings. Isn't that correct, sir?
That what?
That we, when, when a board policy is going to be changed, when board policies are being revision, they go through three readings right now.
Correct, correct.
And that with the procedure that we're proposing, it would be two readings. Correct?
We're proposing in this...
Yes, that's right.
That it be two readings.
But right now, we have, right now, we have three readings. So what I don't understand is, and Mr. Strigman, Mr. Campbell, and Ms. Orshak, y'all been around a lot longer than me. So what I was not aware of until just now was that you had a work session on April 28th, 2018, and this is not shown in our policies. Our policies say September 6th, 2016, they say, you know, when adopted, such and such a date. And in these work session, it says that we were accepting changes to Policy 2.3, that we were going to use a reference to cite the law, that we were going to accept recommended changes from SCSBA to Policy 2.4. But we don't have that in this draft here, so I don't really understand.
Yes, we did. That's what the red, that's what the red...
But, but don't you have to go through readings to do that?
We, we didn't go, we didn't, we didn't have a final reading.
It seems like you would...
Readings are an editing process.
Right.
All right?
We didn't finish reading.
So people make suggestions today. If no one squawks about them, they're being put into the edition that will do the second reading. It's not that you have to have three consecutive readings on the exact same verbiage.
Because this has moved to change the title to include alleged violation of policy, then moved to strike a policy. So when you look at our, when you look at this policy, 3.5...
It doesn't exist.
Maybe I can clarify it a little bit?
Could you clarify?
Yes.
Okay. So the policy manual that you have here has red, orange, and probably blue. And when we began the process back in February, what we started with was that item that went to SCSBA, they gave us some suggestions and changes. And I believe, Robin, that's what's in red right now?
Yes.
Is those, this is all items, or not all, the items that are included in this also include those items from SCSBA and that was from that first reading that was done back in that 2018 session. So we worked from that document to make the edits.
Right, but it just seems to me that we would have...
This is a, this is a first reading, we took that, we use it as guidance, but that first reading doesn't necessarily count because we made changes now to that document and this is all fresh and new. So this is a first reading of the document based on those changes because we also have obviously a new committee and new board members.
Mr. Smith.
Just to go back to Mrs. Orshak's actual question prior to you answering that, could you answer that question, please?
I did answer the question. The question is that the board needs to decide how they want to address violations. I think that was...
No, no, that's not, that's not the question.
Ms. Orshak.
Yes, please, yes, ma'am.
So as we discuss this process of when a board evaluates a fellow colleague, a fellow board member, there will be certain legal and certain not legal means of, of determining, you know, how to proceed with that individual. Would a background check be a legal measure that a board could conduct against any, anyone, a colleague? I'm just trying to understand, what are the legal measures? What are the informal measures for a board to determine what it is we're talking about? Whether they're, you know, whether they need to be managed, disciplined, what have you? And I wasn't certain if that was a legal measure, that particular item.
I don't really understand why you would be doing a criminal background check. Maybe I'm misunderstanding your question.
I don't, no, that's, I'm just curious. I mean, because technically you wouldn't want to have someone removed from a board unless it was something illegal or if they were doing against the law. But would it be appropriate for a board to initiate that sort of a background check? I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, if you wanted to do a criminal background check, I would ask the person to consent, but the statute says that you can remove, the statute says that you can do, remove for cause upon notice and an opportunity for the person to be heard. That's what that statute says. The statute says you have to give due process before you can remove a member for cause. And one of the things that I wrote in the letter to the Attorney General, there are some Attorney General opinions that address for cause means. And I asked for clarification as to whether this board has the authority to remove a board member for cause. That was one of the things I put in that letter so that you all would have clarification.
Mr. Dowling.
Mrs. Cottledge, in that letter, did you draw the difference between appointed trustees and elected trustees?
I referenced the Act. I, I referenced the Act of 277. I referenced Mr. Davis's opinion letter that he gave us because you asked me to do that. And so that was one of the things that I put in the letter with respect to that.
All right, because there are appointed trustees in this state as well as elected. And I think that we should draw using the code. The code is removed from office. What we're really talking about is nullifying an election. Think about that. So I think we should wait for the opinion, but I will buy everybody dinner if someone isn't willing to rule that this board has the authority to nullify an election that one of us were elected on. That's delusional.
I don't think that's what you were saying, but that's not what I'm saying because I, you know, I know very well, there's no way that this board can get anybody off, off the board because people are elected. What I am talking about is some type of mechanism that when any board member acts crazy, like I said, a fool, then he needs to be him or he or she needs to be down for it. Right aboard, period. That's what I'm talking about.
Dr. Wyszynski.
Yeah, I think we should wait until we get the information from the AG. And I also think we need to differentiate between different types of activities and things like that. I think it all depends on the persons involved and the actions involved. So it could be between board members, it could be between, you know, a board member and someone else. So I think that's really important.
I would agree with you. Um, Ms., let's see, Mr. Strigman, then Mr. Dowling.
I think we're talking about a violation of board policies. Is, is that, we're, we're talking about violating board policies and what the enforcement is for violating board policies. Is that, we're talking about violating board policies and what the enforcement is for violating board policies. I'm not sure we're talking about removing people from the board or any of those really draconian things.
Yeah, this came up.
But I understand it came up.
Yeah.
Just trying to get this refocused on. We want to know, how do we enforce these policies? What are our boundaries on enforcing them? Right now, we say, no, I'm not sure I disagree with that. But, you know, we want to stay focused on violations of board policies is what we're talking about. If there's criminal activity, you know, that's really our focus right now, is on violations of board policies.
Mr. Dowling.
Mrs. Kardlitz, since your letter to the AG was at the request of the board, would it be proper to have the board see to your letter?
No, I'm glad to do that. And I'm also going to need to reclarify in my letter because I found out now that Mr. Dunkel made a motion to remove this policy in April of 2018. So I'm going to write another letter to the Attorney General and state that in the letter that policy 3.5, process for addressing violations of policies, was revoked by the board in April of 2018. And I'm going to enclose a copy of the minutes with that because I want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. The previous, the previous board.
Yeah, the question is.
But I will say, board members, that other school districts throughout the state of South Carolina, they do have policies on a process for addressing violations of policy. So you may wish to consider having a procedure in the future. It's up to you.
So for right now, let's leave 3.4 alone while you, while you, while you say 3.5.
Also, for the clarification, I kind of wanted to ask you, so is it legal for the board to do? My question is specifically, because I just, I don't really need an explanation. I just need to know, or yes, is it legal for the board to do a background check on another board member? That's the.
No, sir, Mr. Smith, that is not something that I have researched for today. Is it legal to do a background check on a board member? I don't even know why this is coming up because background checks aren't anywhere in this policy.
Part of what, Madam Chair, I just asked Mrs. Kardlitz for a no or yes answer.
She gave you an answer. What more do you want?
I just said no or yes. It's just no or yes. I just wanted to clarify.
The answer is not no. I can't give you a no or yes, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And what is the purpose of the question, sir?
Thank you.
May I answer since I raised the question? We were discussing about having teeth and how far the board could go in regard to disciplining board members who deviate from policy, who might even break the law. And that was the relevance of my question. Is that a measure that a board could have access to, to legally use in an instance like that? So that was the reasoning behind my question.
We've never discussed that in our policy committee either, so.
Okay, let's go on to 3.6, cost of governance. So is this where you're going to add your?
I was going to let everybody else ask questions.
Okay, so questions first, and then Rachel has a recommendation for the out-of-state panel, I assume from her motion yesterday. Ms. Vidrich.
I do have a question about Roman numeral 2B, as in boy. The very last sentence that said, "Transfer of travel allowances between board members is prohibited unless approved by a board majority." So I just wanted to sound.
Dr. Wyszynski.
Robin can probably help me out with this one, but I believe we removed that because we already do, like one has left over or whatnot, it is already swapped. And so basically, that policy didn't align with practice, current practice.
Right, so then that shouldn't be in here?
Right, right.
Okay. And, but I do question whether that should be done without a particular board member's knowledge. So when you say it's already done, I mean, so our practices shouldn't define our policy. Our policy should define our practices. And so when there are monies moved from one board member's allowance to another, is there a policy that says that a board member should be notified that they're, I mean?
I think I can answer it.
Sure.
So that when we develop the board budget, when it's developed, those are really estimates for what's going to be spent in each category, okay? So, and so let's say the estimates for in-state travel to a conference. Well, some members don't want to go to any in-state travel conferences. And the money is not the individual board member. The board member doesn't own that money. All that is, is really, I guess, an estimate for how much is going to be spent in that category. So it's the budget for the board as a whole. This is the way I understand it. So if somebody is, you know, one member, you know, is going to be, let's say, $50 below that, that, there, below in the negative, and somebody else who's not going to the meetings has got, you know, $200 or $2,000 there, it's that kind of thing. Because Robin said she's required by the district to have the budget balance out so that there's not lines where they're in the hole. Am I correct?
No negatives.
No negatives. They're not allowed to have negatives. So that's the way they do it. And I guess you have to look at it like you don't own the, you know, I don't own the money under my line. It's just, it's an estimate of what's going to be utilized by that member. I think that's the way to look at it. Okay, Ms. Campbell?
I think that was added, that there's no fixed, there's no fixed line item of it in that category.
Mr. Dowling.
It might be a mistake to, in the budget, assign it to names in the first place. What I'm hearing is that it's a total allotment for all our travel and implies ownership when it's placed against our name.
I think for practical reasons, one of the reasons why is like, for example, the local travel, they take into account like how far you are from the district office, blah, blah, blah. So they're taking into account even, you know, for example, Ms. Orshak's driving from Hilton Head is going to be more than Ms. Vidrich driving from Beaufort here. You know, just little, and that's how, I think that's how it ends up being, individual line items that way.
Yeah, I just, that is one of the areas I wanted to talk about yesterday that we never got to. So I will bring it up at a future time. But I just think that that might be an area that we need to talk about. So, thank you. So that line, even though it's written in this document, does not belong in here. Got it. Thank you.
It was already recommended to be removed in the past, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
It is not in red on mine.
Oh. What copy did you get?
I'm not sure.
What I'm writing.
No wonder.
Okay. So any further discussion about the cost of board governance?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, now you're going to do your.
Molly was going to go, meaning wording from the motion yesterday. The motion about out-of-state travel.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to question you.
I know, I wonder if you have.
I have a few questions. I do. But I mean, I can read this one, but I just, you know, I just, I pushed this one out. I forgot this one yesterday. It doesn't matter. But that was, you know, it wasn't so much, it was a good conversation because it's an area of concern.
Yeah, I was going to say, make it bigger.
Okay, so I'd like to codify my motion from yesterday into policy 3.6, Roman numeral 2B, to say that out-of-state travel will align with stated board goals and require a report afterwards.
Just repeat it.
I think I got it.
Okay. Out-of-state travel will align with board, stated board goals and will require a report afterwards. We could say a report to the board, to the full board afterwards. I don't know if it's necessary to put the evidencing in on travel documents or not, but because we're really just looking for a policy surrounding that, so.
I think what's up on the display is backwards of what you're trying to say. We're not aligning board goals to out-of-state travel, we're aligning state for out-of-state travel to board.
Yeah, exactly.
It's, I think it's backwards.
Motion to adopt policy for out-of-state travel that will align with stated board goals and will require a report to the full board. And maybe we should say upon completion because it's a little unclear whether this person's giving a report before they go or after they go.
Yeah, we should probably indicate, you know, within reasonable time afterwards or something. Not like they have to come back on a Monday and report on a Tuesday. So maybe add some reasonableness in there, but.
Ms. Orshak?
I'd like to amend the policy to add, simply because it was board action and we approved it. The board policy. Can we go back, wait till we see the motion, Rachel's original? Okay. To add, this board policy should be printed on district travel documents. Because, only because the board approved that, and then therefore that would also have to be part of the policy. There was quite a bit of discussion yesterday about the actual travel document and what it would say. And the board wanted that specifically, part of this motion, part of this board action. So I think you would just incorporate it into the policy. Does anybody remember that discussion? We wanted some notation on the travel forms. It was very clear. So I would just add it as part of the policy that we're creating here.
Okay, let's see, Mr. Strigman is next.
I'm going along with that. Can we, like, put the actual wording of the motion that passed up there? And then also note that, is that the exact wording?
That's the wording from yesterday. That right there.
That's exactly. And then annotate that that was from?
Yeah, and I think that.
Yesterday's.
Right, so Robin, I was going to mention that next, is making sure that that is indicated here, that this is from, added from a motion on August 16th.
Okay, and the exact wording? Is that align board goals to out-of-state travel, not the way it was before? We corrected it. I'm just worried we corrected it and it doesn't line up with what you said yesterday.
Oh, yeah, maybe it was wrong yesterday. But you're correct in what the intent was. The intent yesterday was obviously that out-of-state travel would align with board goals, not the other way around. Right, so maybe the wording was incorrect yesterday and we didn't catch it. I have one.
And maybe, maybe you just need the wording on the, on the travel document. That could be in the policy.
That was my amendment.
Yeah, so, but maybe that's all that's really necessary to, how shall I say, execute that motion, but by putting it here. So.
I think, so you're saying to change it to just say that we have a policy that the travel documents will indicate out-of-state travel aligns with board, or board goals? Because I think that the policy should actually be out-of-state travel aligns with board goals and then that the document is.
Supports that.
Supports that, yeah. I don't think it's the other way around.
All right. Mr. Dowling.
What's the exact motion? What's the, what's the exact motion?
No one seconded by amendment, so.
Oh, okay. I'll second your amendment. Now, what's the amendment?
Well, this is the motion from yesterday.
Yes, I know that's the motion. What's the amendment?
Robin and Molly, do you need my amendment?
All of the motion did yesterday was move to adopt a policy.
Well, it also says, and as Joanne pointed out, that it's evidenced on the district travel. Read the second part.
Yeah, that's fine. But all we did was agree that we'll adopt a policy to that effect and with the amendment. The codification of that motion from yesterday, which is what Rachel's trying to do now, is completely independent of the motion yesterday. Because all we did move yesterday was to create a policy. Now Rachel is creating a policy. They don't have to tie together, it's the same person, two different things. It's apples and pears. I won't say apples and oranges, apples and pears. So just, I would suggest you just, we just vote on Joanne Orshak's amendment to your original motion.
Do you, are you guys working on that?
Working on that now.
Thank you.
There's no reason why the policy has to mirror what was passed yesterday.
Out-of-state travel.
Out-of-state travel.
Two board goals.
Sir, were you asking that, that information is attached to this, travel sheet?
I think that was Tanya's suggestion yesterday, right? Was that the travel sheet? Which document was it? That one? Okay, yeah. It would basically be a checkbox, like which one of the five goals does your out-of-state travel align with? And you would, you know.
Looks, looks right.
Is that? Is that the, that's not what I said today. Is that the one for today?
This is Joanne's amended to what you were.
Okay, so she.
So her amendment is, and that this policy is evidenced on district travel documents.
That's the.
That's the original.
That's my motion from yesterday. That's the exact wording from my motion yesterday.
What she said today was the out-of-state travel will align with stated goals and will require report to full board upon completion. And then add Joanne's amendment. So out-of-state travel will align with stated goals and will require report to full board upon completion.
Yeah, possibly a reasonable amount.
In a timely manner, or when do we want to scall that out?
In a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, and then how do we get Joanne's part in there?
All right, read it, read it, and I'll tell you, I'll suggest where to put it in. Read what you got supplied.
Got it. Out-of-state travel will align with stated goals and will require report to full board upon completion within a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, request for approval will cite policy requiring alignment of goals.
Earl. I'm sorry, I needed to go out of order.
Go right ahead.
Earl, what's the title on that document that I made? Who said that maybe we can reflect that actual document's name in here?
Yeah, because, yeah.
The document is due for the school district, travel request reimbursement form.
Travel request reimbursement form. So I think we should.
And is there two boxes on there, one for when you're requesting travel and one when you're?
Travel request and other one, travel reimbursement.
Yeah, so you have to request first and then get reimbursed.
So, um, it takes a lot of time. And as indicated on the travel request form, I don't know how we're going to add that in there. This is how, I, I'm, okay, let Rachel look at that. I've got the first part of it down, what you said.
Ms. Orshak?
I just want to point out, thanks for the folks being patient, watching this. This is what it takes to write policy. And it gets exponentially more complex with 11 board members. We will be facing this regularly as a full board at full board meetings, so bear with us here. We will be facing this regularly as a full board at full board meetings, so bear with us here.
Okay, let me read this. And Joanne, can you tell me if this drives with what you're trying to do?
I just wanted to add every component of your original motion.
Okay, let's see if this, this drives. All right. Out-of-state travel will align with stated board goals and will require a report to the full board upon completion, comma, within a measure, a reasonable amount of time. Uh, hang on. And alignment will be evidenced on the travel request reimbursement form. Sorry, I turned my head. And the goal alignment will be evidenced on the travel request reimbursement form. Does that sound right?
Well, I would stick, I would say stick with policy. It, it doesn't leave anything open to interpretation if you just cite the, the policy or the form. That was the gist of the discussion yesterday. I, I just think it's simpler if you use the reference to this policy. And eventually this policy will have a number. You know, you could say policy 4.7, you know? And, and that's what you're referencing on the travel form. Like, can we change the form?
It has a number already. It has, it's already, I think, 2B. It's part of, 2B. Of 3.6.
A quick question, and we haven't answered this yet. Tommy, can we, can we change the form? Can we add that piece? I mean, we decided it, but we don't know.
We can change the form. We, we developed a form, we can absolutely add something. It does have a lot of information, but I'm sure we can squeeze it on there somewhere. We can do both of the things that you're asking. We can make the checkboxes and list the goals and then put per board policy 3 point whatever.
Excellent, wonderful. That's important that we know that, thanks.
So, so you, you want an indication to the actual policy number on that document as well? I was trying to get, my original intent yesterday was to make sure that we were saying on that document which one of the goals we were meeting by attending that out-of-state travel.
If that was your intention and if that has board support, we'll, we'll go with that.
Yeah, and I think putting the policy on there as reference is a great idea. The policy number, excuse me.
Mr. Dowling?
Just so that it ends up in the minutes accurately, could we have it? We're actually voting on an amendment made by Joanne Orshak. Unless she's withdrawing it and I second it.
No, I, I haven't withdrawn the amendment. I, it was a, it was a separate component of Dr. Wyszynski's motion yesterday and I, I think it needed to be included in the policy.
Oh, I, I agree.
Yeah, so no, I didn't withdraw.
I just wanted to show in the minutes who actually made the motion and who seconded it. There you go.
Okay, so any further discussion about this?
Yes. I think the second sentence is supposed to see, say, instead of and alignment, you should say goal alignment.
It said, it was, I wrote it down. And the goal alignment will be evident on the district, whatever it was called, travel form.
District travel request reimburse, reimbursement form.
RRF for short.
All right, so the first vote is on the, the amendment. And the amendment is, and the goal alignment will be evident on the district travel request reimbursement form. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Hallelujah. Now we go back to the original motion. So, out-of-state travel will align with stated board goals and will require report, a report, should add a before the report, to the full board upon completion in a reasonable amount of time. And then the next part would be since it passed and the goal alignment, blah, blah, blah. Okay.
I think it's, sorry. There needs to be a the between report to the full board upon completion.
Thank you, I was reading my paper.
Will require a report to the full board upon completion in a reasonable amount of time. And the word and shouldn't be on that second, at the beginning of that second sentence. It should just say the goal alignment will be evidenced.
Correct.
I'm thinking it was supposed to be there.
Full second Rachel's original, uh, motion.
You did, right?
I have John doing it.
Okay.
John did.
Got it.
Have to go before district too. Maybe you want to capitalize it and blah, blah, blah.
Report to the full board in a reasonable amount of time upon completion.
Upon completion is up there.
Yeah. He was saying switch. But he's-
Okay, so it looks like it's correct up there. All those.
I think you got it.
All the, yes. Rachel, are you satisfied?
We're good, let's go.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, motion carries in answer. Now we're on to 3.7. Any con, any changes or questions or? 3.8. Okay. 3.9. 3.10. Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Tell us which one you're looking at.
It was just me mathematically thinking 3.10.
It's 3.1, right?
But, I'm sure. Nobody else knows.
Now look at policy 4.1. Mr. Campbell, there's no zero there.
Yeah, 4.1, it's 4.10.
Exactly. All right, we're on to policy 4.1. Mr. Figg?
When I was reading through this, and maybe I just missed it. But is there anything in our policy, policy that says we cannot respond to speakers? Can we, when someone goes up for public comment, can we interact with that individual? Can we respond? Can we ask questions? Is there, and did I just miss it in here, John?
Can I, can I say?
Yes, go ahead.
The, the short answer is no. What happened is, up until, I'll guess a year and a half, maybe two years ago, there was a section called comment correction. Where board members, if they wished, could comment on or take issue with comments that had just been made during the public comment. Well, that went away and, and nothing replaced it. The thinking, I think, had universally been that if we start doing exchanges during the public comment, we'll get into a Q and A and, and in the context of running shorter meetings. You know what that does to that theory? So, the answer, again, back to the short answer is no. There is nothing that presents, prevents it except the chair ruling that a comment from us to a commenter would be out of order in the chair's opinion. Chair can, the chair can prohibit it, but we have no policy.
Mr. Strigman?
If you look at K. You have the K. Says-
Yeah, without a very active panel.
Will not respond to speakers.
Oh, I did miss it.
Yeah.
Okay, then I question it. I mean, I, I question whether that should be in the policy because, I don't know, I just feel that, that sometimes we have community members that spend a lot, the entire time, you know, and then they get up at the end of the meeting and then, you know, make a comment or whatever. And it's kind of like, you know, speaking to a, a wall. And so I just wonder if that is the best policy, that we don't respond? Or if it should be struck from this and then at the chair's discretion? Like John just said, that there's nothing, you know what I mean? So, just for conversation.
I understand completely where you're coming from, but the problem is, you know, we don't have people sign up well in advance of the meeting, for example, of what they're going to talk about. And, and you don't necessarily have the information to respond appropriately either. Let's say they're talking about, I don't know, you know, what happened to their child at, at River Ridge Academy, but we haven't, you know, had any of that information. They're just telling us, you know, their side of the story. So what has been happening, so, and I could see it, okay, so then who's allowed? You know, whoever speaks back to them doesn't have the authority to speak for the board. We haven't, you know, taken a board vote or said this is, this is our, our, this is our position on what you've just told us. You can't do that like instantaneously. Now, Kathy has been, if you go down to M, that they are, they are acknowledged for speaking, which that was not happening previously. So that's happening now. And I think, you know, the superintendent, you know, based on what they tell us, I mean, I think it's the superintendent's responsibility typically to, you know, investigate. Like, let's say my child wasn't allowed to take algebra. Okay, well, that should, you know, the superintendent needs to go investigate that. As opposed to, I don't know how we would answer that back or whatever. So, that's, I mean, I understand because it does seem like it's falling in a way almost on deaf ears, but I don't think, I don't see how we could, you know, immediately address it with all the information.
Okay, and just a follow-up. I'm not necessarily saying that we would be addressing a given situation. I'm just saying a response, you know? Thank you. You know, it's been here five hours and you got up to speak and we appreciate your input. I mean, so, I'm just-
Well, that is happening. That is happening.
In writing.
Yes, in writing, that's happening.
I'm just saying at, rurally. I'm looking at this now.
Okay. I think Ms. Orshak and then Mr. Dowling.
So, certain parts of the template, of our meeting template, for example, announcements was added. Is there anything that regulates announcements? Are there any guidelines surrounding that? That never used to be. That just erupted unilaterally on our, a meeting agenda template. So are there guidelines, are there policies that regulate that? If not, I would say, why not? Use it for your announcement. Address your person in the audience if you want to. We don't seem to have any guidelines for what announcements entail. You know, Mr. Dowling was told at a meeting recently that he needed to submit it in advance. Mr. Campbell made announcements at our previous board meeting. I don't think anything was provided in advance. So given how loosely structured that is, I would say you, you could probably at this juncture, address comments.
Mr. Dowling? And then Mr. Guyer?
In fairness, I have heard the chair personally thank everyone when they make their comments at that time. Now technically, the person is addressing the chair. All right? So theoretically, she's right. An individual response would probably be inappropriate in that it would be considered a response from the board.
Right. Now, John, you're right. In fairness, I do hear the chair say thank you.
Well, we could be really tightened up on that. It hasn't happened lately. But everyone who comments signs a comment slip. And they understand that, or they claim they understand that their comments have to be within the purview of the board. Okay, now, if we accept the, if we accept the concept that we really don't have a lot of authority over each other, personal attacks on board members are not really in the purview. And they should not be allowed. And if they, if they do get allowed, then I think of what members should be able to, to respond, but only under, under that circumstance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Guyer?
I want to talk about paragraph 2J. No presentation by a speaker shall exceed three minutes. The chair shall strictly enforce this time limit. A suitable timing device will be employed and audibly notify the speaker at the end of his or her comment, period. At a, at a county council meeting several months ago, a gentleman got up during public comment and refused to stop at the end of three minutes and continued on. The chair tried to stop him. The chair tried to have the law enforcement person there do it. And Sheriff Tanner happened to be there and said, no, you can't do that because it's not illegal. It's freedom of speech. So the chair put the meeting into recess and walked away. So this, this paragraph here really has no teeth in, in that if somebody violates it, we have to take some other action. But the chair cannot force that speaker to stop speaking.
Oh, well, I can maybe answer that. I think only once so far in seven months has somebody really sort of blatantly not adhered to the three-minute timeframe. And I just asked them to sit down and they did. But it's, it's a, it's on the back of the card that they signed so that they're aware of that, that, that policy, if you will. Is, is it law? No, no, policies aren't laws. But I think otherwise we're going to have people speaking for, you know, as you realize, you know, 30 minutes apiece. So there has to be some timeframe. It's not really fair. And I know you that.
I'm not saying that not going to be a timeframe, but there is, our policy says will be strictly enforced and will notify the speaker at the end of the comment, period. But if they refuse to do that, possibly there should be a policy of what will be done.
What would you suggest?
Well, I, I don't know. And that's, I'm not making policy. I'm just saying there's a problem.
All right, Dr. Wyszynski?
Just so that I can clarify, it doesn't say will, it says shall. And if anybody attended those policy meetings, they know that's my sticking point. So with the shall being on there, it, it's a little bit more loose. But I agree with you that we should probably have a, some type of mechanism or policy that says what we will do in the instance that a speaker does not abide by the stated code of conduct. Not with regard to how they will be disciplined, but in regard to what we will do, what action we will take, like he went into recess, something like that. But I just wanted to point out, it says shall.
Mr. Dowling?
I think that, excuse me. If someone in the judgment of the chair were deliberately exploiting seemingly inability of us to do anything about it, I think that the chair can, number one, advise them that their time is up. Two, advise them if they continue talking, they're going to be banned for six months, which is part of the policy. Three, if they don't stop then, you get two hours- Three, if they don't stop then, you've got two options. Declare a recess and go try to reason with them offline, or you can declare them a disorderly person, that they are disrupting a public meeting, where I can tell you from experience that you can get thrown out of the building. It's, I'm not trying to disagree with Sheriff Tanner.
The sheriff was there, and his deputies are briefed on what they can do and what they can't do. And if they don't do something, it's blatantly illegal. They will not be escorted from this, from the room.
And there is ample legal evidence. Wendy, another one. Would you check on the, could you check on the ability of a public body to declare, to declare a person disorderly in a meeting?
Mr. Malkevich?
Yeah. I agree with Mr. Guyer, but I think all of that is, is discretionary in terms of the law offices. There's no law to say what is public disorder, and that has to be addressed in court. But it's like, you know, it's like anything else in terms of that kind of discretion. Is he, is he disrupting the public or not? And if you call and say, "I think this guy's disrupting," and they believe it, then they can do something. Now, I think he just used that to not do anything in that particular case. I think if, if he really felt that, that he wanted to do something, he could have said, "Hey, you, you're, you're, you're in disorder." And the guy would have to take the police department to court for enforcing a rule, a law that's not there, but they do have the discretion or there would be no law on the book for public disorder. There's no law whatsoever for public disorder. You could do anything you like in our society, but people have been, you know, a lot of things are not, you know, accepted in terms of the public demeanor.
Mr. Smith?
However, I, I hear what Mr. Campbell is saying, but you have the first amendment of free speech, and when you have the amendment of free speech, if you have not threatened or caused any harm to anyone, then I believe that you have not threatened anyone or you have not, have not caused any public disruption. And, you know, you have public disorder conduct meaning that you, you've probably threatened or you've tried to cause harm to someone, but you're just speaking and telling them how you feel. I don't believe that that, that caused for that, and that's the reason I believe that he did not do that, because he didn't, he never threatened county council. He just spoke longer than his time. There is, there is no state or federal law that say you cannot speak after you've been told to stop speaking at county council and lock you up. There's no law that states that. So I believe that that's, that is, that is, that is correct. And, I mean, and if we want a, a, a understanding of public, of public conduct, I believe we have officers here, we might can ask him to give us the definition, if he doesn't mind. Just give us the definition, I mean, if he's comfortable giving us the definition of public conduct, if you don't mind.
That's part of his purview.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Campbell.
The gentleman, the reason why Mr. Robin did what he did, the gentleman, it was not his time to speak. He walked up straight out, and that's what Mr. Robin did. I mean, you, you know, he could have cut his mic off if he wanted, but that's the reason. He just, he just got up, went over to see if it went through the top off.
All right. Ms. Pedrig.
Can I just refer us back to 4.1K, the paragraph question about whether or not we can respond to a speaker? So could we pull that up on the board, Robin? 4.1K. And I just want to, there we go. The word "understand," starting with "understand" has been struck out. It actually, when it says neither the board nor individuals will not respond to speakers, it's a double negative, so actually you can, you know? So, I, I, oh, darn, Joe. So, I mean, that has to be changed, capital N, and then it should be neither nor, and it not needs to be struck if the intent is that we, okay? All right, and then also, what other, if I may, is there a policy, or it maybe doesn't have to be a policy, and that's why I'm asking, to require a police officer at all of our meetings?
No.
So that is a regulation, it is a request, what is it?
It's just, it's just something that...
I guess you'd say a practice, yeah.
And so when do we question our practices?
If they're broke, don't fix it.
Yes, sir.
It's a practice. A couple of board members said they were afraid of me, and they started having an officer at every meeting, and they just kept on doing it.
Okay, so that's what I'm just asking, and being a new, I mean, eight months, I can still say a new board member, when do we question our practices? Because, I mean, today is a long day. It comes out of our board budget, right? It's coming out of our board budget, and Officer, it's great having you here, but I don't, I mean, so I'm just wondering, at what point do we question our practices when it's not in our policy?
Yeah, Robin is just whispering in my ear that, that Dr. Burke had suggested that we continue the practice of having an officer at each of our meetings.
Because county council has it, and he thought that we should have the same practice that county council has. That was why, that's why we continued it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Mr. Strivinger. Yeah, or we could send it to the, I think, the operations committee.
Send it, certainly send it to us.
It's, it's going to be down in the queue.
Do you want to pay the money or don't you want to pay the money?
Yeah.
There's nothing they can do unless the law is behind them. Spending money on it, it's an agenda item. Or if you want to sign it?
I'll think about it, I'll think about it. Okay, let's go on to 5.1. Yes, we did. We, it was under 4.1, 2K, it became neither the board nor individuals will respond to speakers. Okay? And now the last, the last section is the 5.1, the board superintendent relationship, which a lot of us have been reworded. We are almost there. Are we good? Okay. So, Ms. Orshak?
Is, will the board codify Mr. Strivinger's motion yesterday? Rachel made one, Mr. Strivinger made one, in regard to, I don't know if we can call that up or not, Robin, it was direction about the purchasing of, you know, technology-related items, that that required also a policy creation. So unfortunately, we, we should go through that exercise.
Mr. Strivinger's motion was codified in exactly motion form, so I would move that we adopt his motion as stated yesterday as policy.
Can we see it first before...
We're getting it.
Rachel, Ms. Dr. Wasniewski.
I believe it was broader than technology.
Yeah, it was.
It was not just specific to technology.
I'm just giving it generally.
And we don't really have a section here.
That's what I was...
Yeah, okay.
It was broader, it was constructional services, program services or technology purchase or we didn't, we don't have a, we stick it at the end, or an appendix. Although, you know, at some point, I would suggest that we take motions like that and put them someplace, because I know when John was trying to, when John was trying to find all the motions that have been made since the last thing, not all that easy. Maybe we should have a little repository at the end of this manual that says motions passed or something.
Yeah, because it seems like this doesn't fit neatly into one of the sections, honestly, unless somebody can think of where.
Here's the motion.
I think we have something, adhering to financial standards, we have something, and we have something in here about adhering to generally accepted financial standards.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we do.
Pretty sure.
Do you remember, Joe?
I would also move that, sorry. I would also move that we take David's motion as made yesterday and refer it to the finance committee for possible inclusion in the Pritchett's Code.
What are we doing? Are you making a motion?
There already is one.
There's a motion on the floor. Was it just a suggestion, Mr. Dowling? Was it just a suggestion, Mr. Dowling, or were you, did you want to make a motion?
I wanted to make a motion.
Okay, there's one on the floor right now, I think.
And what is the motion?
Put that there. And who made, tell me, who's the motion?
John made the first, I seconded it.
You seconded it, okay.
So what's the current motion on the floor? Just the same thing as yesterday?
He's trying to codify it, or being, I believe, right, John?
He seconded. Rachel.
All you need to codify is take off, I move that, and then...
And then what are you going to do, put it as a, as an appendix here or something? Where would, where would you put it here?
It's, it's not your...
You don't have to have a pre-existing section, you can create a new section.
Then what would you like? Ms. Orshak?
The committee is now defunct. Why are we consulting with the ad hoc policy committee on a decision on this matter? They have no more decision-making.
So where do you suggest you put it?
I'm going to be, after we're finished with this and disposed of it, I'm going to be asking for some clarity about policy formation going forward, so I don't, I don't know.
6.1. We'll make it 6.1. Is that all right with you?
Whoever, we'll make the motion.
It's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
So as a matter of process, I think that in codifying this, there clearly does not seem to be a defined area where this will belong. I also take David's comment with regard to further motions that are going to occur throughout time. I think that that would be, that task of keeping track of those and that they need to be codified could be a role of the secretary, since they have a lot of responsibility with regard to record-keeping of the meetings. So I think before we move to putting this somewhere, we need to have that addressed, because as of right now, we would almost be working backwards. So...
Mr. Dowling?
I'll move to post online, motion to a later date.
All right, that sounds good. So now we have to, are we going to make, so we finished the review of the revisions, and we made changes, and go, can we go back to that motion, please? From the beginning of this exercise? The one from, that started way when we started looking at this. It was Rachel's.
Rachel's.
It was Rachel's.
That's it.
Okay, so here, Rachel is your motion. So I move the Board of Education to approve the policy manual revisions at the first revision, subject to modifications. So, we made modifications, and we said we were, right now, the code of conduct was temporarily on hold until we had a return opinion from the Attorney General's office. Is that the understanding of everybody?
Yes, and they're also, we're also waiting on the AG's, AG's opinion on liability surrounding, board liability surrounding executive session participation electronically.
Correct, thank you for adding that. All right, so...
And also the last one that John just asked her to, a few minutes ago about.
We just...
No, it was, it was one more. Didn't he just ask Ms. Cartliss to add one more to that?
Not that I'm aware.
Yeah, Ms. Cartliss, didn't he actually, didn't, didn't he actually add, he added one more?
No, maybe you're, maybe you missed, I think maybe you were standing up when Mr. Dowling withdrew the, the last motion about...
No, he asked, he asked her, when we were going over, he said, "Ms. Cartliss, could you add that to your list too, to check on?" And she, and I remember specifically saying, "Oh, yeah, let me, let me write that down, Mr. Dowling." And he said, "You can add that one too."
Mr. Dowling, I, I did hear you say about nullifying an election. I was going to talk to you about that by my, by myself, to make sure that I, that I include...
I don't know if that's applied to this motion.
It's not.
About the code of conduct, briefly, question.
But since, I actually asked that question because since y'all were putting all, since y'all were putting all that grammar in there and saying, "Oh, all y'all asked her to ask the AG and all that," since that's, that's a request of the AG as well, then I figured why not put that in there? If y'all are asking these different things of the AG, then, and then you asked her to check on that too as well, then if you're putting all that in the motion, then go ahead and add that to it.
The motion is to approve the policy manual that is subject to the modifications, and that's one of the questions that becomes a modification.
Okay, no problem, no problem. No problem.
Okay, so we still have, we have, we still have the discussion on the, the length of the board meetings and the future topics added to the superintendent's, and we have public comments. Now, we have one person who submitted a public comment, so I was going to suggest that we let... Oh, she left? Okay. So, would you guys like to take a five or 10-minute break again?
Did we vote on that?
It was, it was already voted on. So that's why I went back to it, to just be sure we all had the same understanding, like when Kathy reads it. I just wanted to be sure we all were on the same page, right?
I want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, go back, put it up, back up there.
And it was already voted on, because Rachel did it at the very beginning.
It just said basically, we're going to do the first reading. Yeah. Go take a break.
Did you say, did I hear the word "break"?
Go break. Just a few minutes.
You all don't have lunch coming?
I know. We should have had it.
Oh, can you, can you find out, when can we check into it?
Okay, okay.
All right, next time, Robin will do box launches, right? You just rewound me.
Is there a vending machine anywhere? She has, she has snacks. How about our snacks? Yeah, go get snacks. Some Nutter Butters, exactly. I think we all, I had a banana not too long ago.
I had a protein cake that happened to my person.
Oh, good for you. So, yeah, you made the, we don't need to show how come, wait a second. But I just wanted to make clear what the, what the... Modifications, yeah, yeah. We're going to scavenge down to nowhere else.
I want to have, I want to sit down with the new Chief of Instructional Services Officer, Dr. Wazniewski, and just, and just say, okay, I want a long-range plant, because I am a higher of this, you know. This is due to the state, so we need to, we need to go meeting again, because we've only got a break to do.
That is so true.
Oh, isn't that so true, Kathy? You and, I mean, it's happened, it's happened at least twice, where we've had to hurry up, and not only that... Hey Kathy, can I ask you something?
Sure.
They have under the news for the strategic governance. We need to test policy.
I can get this. I have a letter.
So is this...
Yes. Yes.
You know what? Oh, I heard you say that, but I don't know if it's addressed to...
Before anybody else...
After, after...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, in a re-circuitment, Chairman, and a few other things.
That's what the policy says, right?
So that we... So, well, we have a, as part of our other guidelines, a information sheet that says any potential items are listed. And that's going through the process. We can add some information.
But see, but I think right now, this new policy, the, the voting of it... But I don't, did it change? I don't think it changed.
Um... Right, and so what is, what our requirement says is that you can...
Oh, good. What a good idea.
So what we can do is modify that.
Right. You're so right. That's a very good point, and asking me to make a motion. The hours that you're all...
It's not a permanent exception. It's not added immediately. Get somebody else to vet it before you bring it to us. That's just professional stuff.
I mean, how is it possible that those 500 dollars and dollars? Oh, boy.
Anybody? Just have somebody check it.
Do you know, I love that job. It was taking about 150, 600 dollars.
Now, just do something. Most of us have to, but you... Hey, I just got upset when I did it.
Yeah, no, I think that was a good...
Yeah, I just had to, just, no, we can't, we can't be babysitting.
You're good. That sounds really good. Okay. All right, we're off to the next one.
Yep. You heard the other topics too? Recamp or a scheduled date time?
Robin, is William out there in the hallway?
I'm sorry.
If you, can you just check to see if both are there?
Yes, of course.
How appropriate. All right, we'll get back to our last topics, discussion on the length of the board meetings and future topics added to the board agendas. So, um... So our teacher, principal, here, Ms. Robideau, is going to write our suggestions on the, on the tablet there. So I thought the easiest thing would just go around the room and just start giving suggestions. Does anybody like to start it? And whoever starts it will just go in order? All right, Mr. Guyer.
Can I, can I just preface this a little bit with the objective of this?
Sure.
Is taking all of our ideas and how we can shorten board meetings and coming to consensus at the end of this. And I would suggest that we even give ourselves a time limit to do this today. That is the teacher. 15 minutes, how about that? Let's be effective. Oh, there's a handheld mic, okay. All right. I'm just, I don't know how to turn this on. At this point, I'm just the scribe. I'm writing your ideas on the...
Tablet.
The tablet, okay.
Mr. Guyer?
Points of celebration. I like to see the children. I like to see the demonstrations that they do. This is probably the high point of the meeting, as far as I'm concerned. But all the awards for underwater basket weaving and all the other things that they come up with, and the children are waiting while we're in executive session, and the parents are there, and they bring them up, and we take their picture that we never see anyplace else, has minimal value. It seems to me that if we want to recognize individuals' performance that star-track team or whatever, we go to the school. A board member go to the school when they're honored at their own ceremonies. We waste, that's not a waste of time, but it's a probably inappropriate use of time in the points of celebration.
So I'm, I'm just, right, he was positive about points of celebration, so I put a plus there. Negative about recognition ceremony, right? Okay?
So, go ahead, Mr. Dowling.
I think that occasionally we have presentations that we really could have... I understand the superintendent's desire to bring people in, especially when they're televised from the staff, and give us a show and tell about what they do. But really, we had a couple of presentations yesterday we could have read had they been sent to us, and we're just as informed as we, or uninformed as we ended up at the end of the presentation. So unless it's germane to something that we're going to take action on, I think that if the officers encourage the superintendent to mail us some stuff for our edification, that would be terrific. But having a presenter come in and read slides to us without us being able to do anything except saying, "Hey, great job", that can get, and that can distract us from dealing with issues that we do have to make decisions on and, and that.
Dr. Earl Campbell?
I think we are missing the picture. The life of our meeting, the last two meetings, was not because of students or the district. It was because of us as the board members. And I'm going, I'm going to deal with this right now. I'm going to step on somebody's toes, so just say ouch. The, the meeting that we had before the last meeting, we had three people from, to talk about the stuff going on in Brooklyn County. We waited until the last part of the meeting before we talked about it. And it just went on and on and on. It didn't have anything to do with student achievement. So we have to govern ourselves as board members when we ask questions. Our la, last meeting we had, the same thing, similarly, wasn't talking about those things. But we keep asking questions, going with the same question, over and over and over. If, if you ask a question for once, you should be satisfied with the answer. But it, but it seems that some of us, we don't get the answer we want, so we keep going back and forth, back and forth. And it doesn't have nothing to do with student achievement. Those two meetings, there was not one thing that would discuss doing those things that had anything to do with students. So we need to pull this ourselves. That's what I...
Are you ready, David?
I guess, um, and I guess it's a follow-through on that, but somehow I'd like for the board to more or less demand that the chair enforce discussions that are relevant. And I realize it's, it's tough, because on one hand, you don't want to ever cut off anybody's thing, but you can. You can put things on parking lots to lay them to another meeting. There are ways to, to deal with things that aren't directly relevant to what's in front of you at, at that particular moment. And I don't, I don't want to put the burden on, on the chair. I want the board to tell you to enforce that more rigorously. That's really the only thought that I have.
All right, Ms. O'Shaughnessy?
Here's something that I, I try to do, I endeavor to do, but don't always follow through, is put a motion out there first, and then have someone second it, if, if someone deems it worthy of discussion, and then commence the discussion. Oftentimes, we'll lead in with a good bit of discussion, then have the motion, and then a second round of discussion. So it, it would be helpful as chair to say, is there a motion? Is there a motion for this matter? And then that might help rein in some of that, you know, excessive or repeated discussion that takes place.
Mr. Mel Campbell, then Dr. Wazniewski, and then Mr. Dowling.
Well, everybody's, is saying what I want to say. I, you know, how can we manage the discussion is, is what I want, when a motion is on the board. You have an opinion, and, and then it goes around everybody that states their opinion, then everybody has to come back and rebuttal someone else's opinion. I think at that time, decisions should be made by the time everybody's, you know, has spoken. I made up my mind where I'm going with it. And most of the time, I'm just sitting back with, the back and forth. And, and I don't think it's a, it's a idea that you're going to convince anybody. And those, that's where we spend most of our time, just minutes of, you know, going back and forth. I speak once, I think I've had enough.
Dr. Wazniewski?
I echo very loudly what Ms. O'Shaughnessy said.
Me too, but I have something else to add. I would like to see priority given to board members talking instead of presentations, points of celebration, concert, second grade choirs. And I think that if we're going to come in with our minds made up and sit here and make a vote without saying anything, and not expect members to listen to what we're saying, then we can just phone it in. You know, we can phone Robin at 4:00 and say, here's how I vote on this. The whole idea behind representative democracy is that we get together and discuss things. And discuss things means more than just your opening statement that I'm for or against. It's listening to the other person, perhaps agreeing with them, perhaps disagreeing with them. That's why it's called debate. But that's what we're supposed to be about, as a collection of elected officials meeting to deliberate on legislative matters, legislative matters for the school district. So I don't like five-hour meetings, but if it takes five hours to debate things, if we can't debate, then reason is of no use to us, and we can send an email on our votes.
Hey, one.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to add, I think that when we go into executive session, I believe we need to take, we need to come up, be out at 6:00, because our public is waiting for us. And if we need to go back into executive session to finish our business, that's just one of the things that I would add up there that we, you know, feel badly for the public that are sitting out there waiting.
So I can make some suggestions too. So here's basically, how do you shorten a meeting? Just simply, you have less agenda items. You limit the time of discussion for each topic. You could actually have a timeframe, but sort of similar to what we've had for the work session, but we're not, you know, tied to that completely. You could also limit how, the discussion by the members, like perhaps each member could speak for two minutes if they'd like, and then, and then repeat, you know, a second round for two minutes. But when you've got 11 people, you've got, what, 22 and 20? There's 44 minutes on one topic. If you let everybody have the chance to speak for two minutes, and then also, after everyone's spoken, speak again. So it's very hard, because we have 11 people. I, I, I also am in favor of what Mr. Guyer said. I really think the celebration, the vast majority of that, needs to be at the school level. And then the board members could, you know, attend to, attend, you know, the schools that are in their district or whatever, for that type of thing. Dr., yeah, I know Dr. Berg thought that also, from what he had told me, that he really felt a lot of that should really be at the school level. Those are kind of the...
Did I, did you say shorten agenda?
Shorten agenda, or give timeframes on each topic. And if we're not done, then it's unfinished business, and I guess we go to the next meeting. I do agree with you, Kathy, too, that I think it's fair, it's only fair, I don't think it's only fair to the public to, one, you know, start the meeting on time, and, two, their, their comments. They should know when, you know, that's the only thing they want to come for is the comments. That, that should be a consistent time for them, where they do not have to, have to, you know, well, the comments didn't go at 2:00, they're going at 4:00, or whatever it is. You know, I just think we should try to have some consistency about, about it, since it is, you know, a good part of what we're doing is for the public, if not all. All right, Ms. Pidridge?
I agree with Mr. Dowling that that conversation is the key, because it really is very important to hear sides. And Colonel Guyer, that as wonderful it is to hear all the points of celebration, the kids are out too late sometimes, and our staff members, they come to work at 7:15, and sometimes they're not getting home till 11 or 12, and then the next morning, they have to get up and be at work. have to get up and be at work. So I think the point of celebration, the coming out of executive session on time, and maybe cutting back on some of the presentations. So, thank you for bringing this topic up, because this is crucial, too.
So, does anybody hasn't spoken that would like to speak? I think maybe Mr. Smith, if you'd like to say something? No? It's Ms. Cartel.
When we're done with that topic, I just need some clarity before we adjourn.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Orshak?
So we've gone to a committee structure. We could rely maybe even a little more on our committee structure. There may be, I know we all disagree with this, there may be some topics that could be, there may be some topics that could be diverted to committee that are being tackled at the full board level. It's tricky which ones you decide to send. But in doing that, we want to make certain that we budget enough time for the committee reports, because I know the finance committee has had some significant reports, which have been quite lengthy in regard to recommendations we're making. And I know the academics committee, student achievement's gonna be right in the fore once our new chief instructional services officer gets into place. So I think that's a key piece of the agenda right now, the committee reports, and possibly sending more topics to committee that might have an impact on the length of our meetings. I don't know.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith?
Well, actually, I understand what everybody said, but I do not agree with the points of celebration, because points of celebration are the emotional time for those kids to come in, in front of, in front of Michigan, to be awarded, to be awarded in front of everyone and the superintendent, that's an honor. And I think for us not to honor these kids by bringing them up forward, because it's not just about going to school and honoring them at the school, let them know at the district level that we think what they do is important. I think that to take that away is, I don't think that that's a good message. I actually, I enjoy that. Because a lot of times, I, if you remember, I think that reminds us of our job, of why we do what we do, because those kids coming in, those kids, they give us, they give us warm welcomes, and they give us goosebumps. And that refocuses us for what we do, why we do. So moving forward, I don't see, I don't see a problem with it. If we come out of executive session at a certain time to identify that, I don't think the parents have a problem with it. I don't want it to be, because I don't want it to be, we cut it off because we don't think that point of celebration. Maybe if we shorten it, if we have, give them a certain time to do it, and we get out and do it, but I don't see a general problem with having a point of celebration. I think the kids need to know that we appreciate them, and we do need to see what's going on in the schools, and then them coming and presenting that those kids are, that's important. I love our babies, and in those circumstances, I want that to go away. That's just my point.
Ms. Orshak and Mr. Dowling?
Another suggestion is, Mrs. Cushingberry's done a great job of uploading our committee's videos on the website. I know, I've been able to go back and watch committee meetings that I've not been able to attend. Costs less to do it that way, rather than showing up for your stipend, and it's, and the quality is decent from most of the videos I've seen. So that could help defray some of that conversation or repetitive conversation that may have already taken place at a, you know, like a really critical committee meeting. So that's something we could rely on as another tool.
Mr. Dowling?
I'd just like to make a comment on limiting, establishing time limits for conversations, because notice I'm using the word conversation. It's give and take, back and forth. To have two minutes to make your point is one thing, but when another person makes a point, if it's a great point, or if it's a fallacious point, or it's a no, a lie, you want to come back and comment on that. And I think, for instance, the points of celebration, I don't think we're trying to cancel them, we're just trying to transfer them back to the schools. They'll still be celebrated. But that's just my read on what you said. And if I'm, if we have strict time limits, we don't get that opportunity. And we're not, it's not discourse anymore, it's grandstanding.
Mr. Mel Campbell?
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly what I'm saying. I'm saying, you know, after a certain amount of vetting, we have to make decisions, or we could be here all day back and forth about someone's opinion on what they said versus counter to what you said. I mean, we listen to each one, and then we come to some kind of conclusion. That's, even debates have time limits. And that's what I'm saying. I'll stick with that.
Ms. Orshak?
Some of us enjoy that back and forth, some of us not so much. So unfortunately, that falls squarely on the chair's shoulders to rein that in. For me, if I don't feel I've had my questions answered, if I don't feel the topic has been vetted enough, the only risk there for me is that it might result in a no or an abstention. That's it. And there's been a few instances where that's taken place, not many. But unfortunately, that's a, that's a chair thing, reining that in.
Mr. Earl Campbell?
Yeah, I agree with something Kathy said about executive session. We're supposed to start our regular thing at six, then we cut the executive session off and go back to the last part. As far as points of celebration, that's not the problem. And we know that, that is not the problem. It's not the point of celebration is the problem, it's us, as board members. And we need to police ourselves, as I said before.
Anybody want to add anything to this list? So now, I think our job or our challenge would, to look at this list, to look at this list, and see if, I would suggest that we look at this list and see if we can just say, "Okay, three things, we'll try three things." And then we keep this list, we see how trying those three things has worked, and if it has any impact, and then if it does, well, great. If it doesn't, we come back to the list and say, "What else could we try?" So, do you think we could identify three things? John?
How about if we have Robin listen and send them to us, so we can think on them, or we can watch the video if we can hear it, and then discuss it at another meeting? Because I think everybody's a little afraid.
Joanna?
I respect soliciting board input on this, but ultimately, the officers were elected to manage our meetings. And I would say that, given this input, it falls squarely on the officers' committee's shoulder to do this. Each committee has a separate scope, and one of the primary responsibilities of the board officers is to set the agenda with staff and to run meetings. And so I think we would be taking away that authority from you. That is one clear authority that the officers do have. So I appreciate that you sought our input, but from there, I think it's really the officers' job.
Mr. Strivinter?
Yeah, I just wanted to, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I just wanted to add, like shorten agenda, if we have, you know, if we have 10 pounds, we're trying to get in a five-pound bag, you need to have another bag. So one of the options would be to have an additional meeting as a way to shorten the agenda.
When necessary.
We're not ready yet. Okay. Ms. Fidrich?
I would support Ms. Orshak's idea or suggestion, that you know, you've gotten our input, all right? And I would support that you guys decide, the officers.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Dowling?
This whole conversation is reinforcing my belief that the more emphasis we put on committee work, like Joanna says, the better off we're gonna be. The brunt of the work can take place in committees, and the decision-making can take place at the board level.
Mr. Foster wants to add something.
I do, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding this, and make sure board members are understanding this. When you talk about points of celebration, are you differentiating between what we refer to as points of celebration, recognitions? Basically, those are limited to students or staff who've won state or national awards, and the musical performances, because we look at those as two separate things. The musical performances have already been booked through the entire year. And those are, those are set during the summer. So we look at those as two separate things, I just want to make sure the board members are aware of that.
Yeah, I thought they were two, I thought the points of celebration were the musical things, and that the recognition ceremony, I thought that's what Dick said, but I...
It's a terminology issue. When we refer to points of celebration, we're talking about the recognition.
Ah, got it.
The musical performances are the musical performance.
Okay. I'll make that here, so it's clear.
Ms. Orshak?
So Jim, would it be appropriate to correct the situation and say that we've erred in some way in that our board policy very succinctly states that the agenda's crafted by the officers with district staff? So in light of the fact that that may not have, unless it was taken with a previous set of board officers, I don't know. Would that, would that work? Could we correct it, given the input here?
Corrected.
Well, meaning we find some other avenue, aside from a board meeting, to highlight those areas that we've already been committed to?
Absolutely.
Would that work?
That's always at the board's discretion.
Okay, is that something that the board might consider?
The points of celebration are generally going to be month-to-month anyway, because they're timely recognitions, you know, that's something that would just end.
Yes.
The musical performances, those, that's just been casperactus, that's just been rolled over from one year to the next, it's just been done as long as I've been here. So that, those invitations would have to be rescinded?
Or maybe just shifted to another venue or another outlet. It's just a suggestion. Another thing that I forgot to bring up earlier about the board agendas, Robin responded on behalf of the chair recently, I had some questions about where will the teachers' group come forward? And there were a couple other items, forgive me, I can't remember them.
The report for the...
But it seemed a little heavier, like we had some additional options on the second meeting of the month versus the first. So that second meeting of the month is automatically has some things to start with before we even add the relevant agenda topics to it. So that's something we might want to consider when looking at the agenda. We had the teachers' report, Robin, what were the other items?
You have your monthly report, the transparency report, and the report of over $100,000.
And the over $100,000. So there may be questions coming from that, and that's the second meeting of every month. Again, that's not for me to figure out, but just something to think of about.
The teachers are quarterly.
They're only quarterly, but they would be at the second meeting of the month.
Correct.
Okay.
Another thing we've committed to quarterly are the priority schools and the, what's the name of the other, TI?
The TSI.
TSI or TIS schools?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's also a quarterly set, and I believe for the next time that those are on the agenda is the second meeting of September. So that's gonna be there, too.
So what I just heard, and I think that we probably can look at that, is the things that are recurring, you know, maybe we can share the load between the, between the two agendas.
Yep. So the last thing was the future topics added to the board agendas, that was John's topic?
My rationale, sorry, my rationale for that is that two of the three committees are employing it, and I think, I think that the chairs who do that will say that it works rather well. They take suggestions for future topics, it's not to vote on them, it's not to garner support for a certain topic, but it's to just share information short of making a formal agenda request. We have a, we have a method to request agenda items, okay? But we don't have any way to brainstorm. And this is, this is a way to brainstorm. I think that if we could put announcements on the agenda, then we're perfectly capable of having a section where we can say, "I would like to see," in the near future or the far-off future, a discussion on this. Anybody interested in that? That's what my purpose behind the future topics is, conversation.
Ms. Orshak?
Since announcements doesn't have any guidelines, we could probably use it for that, too. Yeah, I mean, it's a catch-all, really. Announcements could be, if Mrs. Fidrich wants to say to speaker, "I thank you for staying the entire meeting tonight." She could say that at 10 o'clock at night under announcements, there's no guidelines. Mr. Dowling wants to bring up something for a future agenda, I don't see why it couldn't be brought up there.
As long as the topic is not discussed, and as long as there's no vote taken, there's no issue with the figure of information.
Can I? Ms. Robin?
Would it, see, I'm trying to think, see something like this coming up, a future topic? Would then the chair say, "That's a great idea, I think it should go to the academic committee," or, I mean, I, so, you know what I'm saying? Would it be assigned? You know, I could see some future topics probably would be more better vetted in a committee than in the whole board. So that would be...
Well, then, my point is that nothing will be vetted in this future topics discussion, and the chair at any time can assign stuff to committees. But you're right, it would be perfectly appropriate, I think, for the chair to say, "Yeah, I think that's a good idea, and that sounds like finance committee territory, so have at it. No harm, no foul."
Any other comments? Ms. Fidrich?
Oh, sorry. I was just, I was just thinking, we were just talking about shortening.
That's exactly what I was thinking, honestly.
We may be increasing this by a minute and 37 seconds, I'm not sure.
It would be lengthy.
Dr. Wazniewski?
No, I could actually see adding this would actually shorten future agendas, because you're basically then delegating, "Okay, this is something that may have been added, let's send it to committee."
No. Yes. I move that we add future topics as a standing agenda item for monthly board, for board business meetings.
I second that. So now, okay, board business meetings are your two meetings a month?
I seconded for this, for continued discussion, because I think it also could help with some of the rigidity of the meetings and allow an area for some free-flowing thought.
Any further discussion? Ms. Robin?
So if I understand it, though, the free-flowing thought will just come from the person who says, "I would like to see this." I mean, there's not gonna be discussion, as John said.
No discussion.
No discussion.
No discussion.
So it's not, it's, yeah, it's just somebody coming up with an idea.
I think also that we have to be realistic, I mean, I may not be, as the chair, may not be able to immediately dispose that agenda item, because we gotta look at, you know, what else is in the queue, so on and so forth. But I don't want people to think, "Okay, we mentioned at the board meeting, and you were supposed to tell us right then and there which committee it went to."
That's certainly not part of a motion.
Mr. Strivinter?
If we're not gonna have discussion, how is this different from an email?
If we're not gonna have discussion, then what?
If we're not gonna have discussion, I don't, I'm trying to figure out how that would be different from sending an email.
Ms. Orshak?
Interaction, I'd say live interaction. Some people don't even read the agreement.
That's what confuses me, you just said we're not gonna have discussion.
What's the harm? We're not gonna discuss the merits of it, okay? But we can get instant feedback from people whether they think that's a good idea. You don't have to say why. It's, again, it's interpersonal interaction as opposed to electronic communication.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clarify, and that clarifies it, because, you know, on one hand, we're not gonna have discussion, and if you're not gonna have discussion, you can do it elsewhere.
Ms. Orshak?
David, here's why I would value it. My constituents who might be watching know that there's a priority that is of high importance... My constituents who might be watching know that there's a priority that is of high importance to them that I am publicly submitting for a future agenda, and then they become aware of that. That's just one example. But, and, and I know that FOIA can release our emails as well, but it just makes it, it just takes it one more public step.
Ms. Strivinter?
I'm not opposed to it at all. As you know, I've, I've been trying to get this on for years. I just want to make sure that we're clear, we either are going to discuss it or we're not going to discuss it. And I think the answer is yes, we are going to discuss the merits of the item.
I don't think we can.
We can't.
No, we can't discuss the merits of the, of the.
So what, what are?
We can, we can voice ascend to the, to the idea, I think that's a good idea, but stop short of discussing the actual particulars of the topic. And that's what FOIA is all about, is that the public needs to know what we'll be discussing. There's no vote taken, there's no discussion.
Not all that, I'm just trying to give the parameters around this discussion. Are we discussing the validity of the item as an agenda item? Yes, we think that should be an agenda item.
Scenario, okay, scenario. I'll say, I think we ought to have a swinging at the superintendent golf tournament this summer, and Mel says, that's a good idea. Fine, I brought it forward, I got some feedback, on to the next thing.
What if Tina Guas says, no, that's not a good idea? Then what?
I might back you on that one.
All right, Mel, you wanted to say something?
I wanted to say, yeah, that was, that was the, that was the intent, like John mentioned, but, you know, the public's watching and they get a, they get a quick view of our thought process as a board and where we're going. That'd be the positive merit of that in my mind. So if he brings up that golf contest and other things and the board's listening for a lot more, I mean, the people look, listening for a lot more substantial items from, from where we're headed, you know, because they come every meeting and they really anticipating from what we've just written as the agenda item, but they don't have a thought on the hour trend, and it'll help us create some kind of focus on where we're going despite everybody's idea of what's important, what's not important from what they're getting up and receiving, and that's, that's my take on it, that's why I'd support it.
Ms. Robine?
I think I, you know, there might be a way to do this where we just say, future topics, it's listed at the end of the agenda or whatever, five minutes, that's all, and we set a timer, so John says, I want this, and, you know, it's a snapshot, we're not getting into a discussion, it's just written down, and then Mel says, I want this, and somebody, you know, just, and, just five minutes, you know, just if we limit ourselves and just say five minutes.
6.5. No, 6.10, I'm going to take it.
Five times 11 is 55.
Yeah, right, we don't, not five minutes per person, five minutes total.
Dr. Wasniewski?
Yeah, five minutes total.
So I'm just thinking about what our policy manual says right now with regard to adding an agenda item, and it says that you send an email and you CC all board members, and anyone that wants to put their support behind it can also do so. So I, I don't think that any one board member has the ability to say, no, we're not going to talk about that. I think if others indicate their support for it, we need to discuss it. So I'd be totally, I think that a time limit should be limited or put upon the board member making the suggestion, and then it's simply a, does anybody else want to indicate their support? Yeah, I support that, not a, I support that because blah, 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 blah. No, just, I support that. Okay, so there's an indication of support, let's move along, you know, it doesn't have to be a long drawn-out thing.
All right, let's, oh, can we have the motion up? Oh, sorry. Oh, here it is.
I just.
No, we have to vote and then we can say whatever. It doesn't have, it's not in our faces. Okay, so move to make the future topics as a standing agenda item as discussed, and the, okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, motion carries unanimously. Now, Ms. Cartlich?
I just, Policy Committee, I need your guidance of exactly what you want me to request of the Attorney General if I follow your directive and do exactly what you want.
You can't do that anymore.
No, I need, but I need to get clarity on that. I mean, I do, if you all, if I need to meet with them separately afterward.
There's no Policy Committee.
There isn't a Policy Committee.
This is garbage, we don't have a Policy Committee.
Oh, no, no, I mean, former members of the Policy Committee, I still think if you have.
I can't.
We don't have any authority anymore.
I just want to make sure for the board then, on this Attorney General's opinion, I want to make sure I do exactly what you all want, which I know about the board liability if there's a breach of confidentiality during electronic transmission, executive session. And then the other one, this is one I need your little, I need help from the board. What, what is the process, what process should the board use for addressing violations of board policies? And what else, Mr.?
No, I was just going to suggest that you solicit opinions from us as individual board members because none of us can speak for the other person and there is no Policy Committee to give an opinion to.
Sorry, I keep, I still think of y'all as a committee, sorry.
Well, unless you reactivate it to get that done.
But is there anything else that you all, does any board member have anything else they would like me to request in the Attorney General opinion because I'll make sure I follow your directive?
Can you repeat what you had down for the part where you were going to ask them about the board?
I was looking at the comments that people made today and it was, how, what is the process for the board to address violations of board policies? But the one thing I heard some conversation about was, you know, violations of a code of conduct, or you want me to just say board policies? You know, we had process for addressing violations of policy in that old policy that you all don't have anymore, so is that the question? What is the, what procedure does the board, should the board use for addressing violations of board policies?
I think we're just trying to find out what authority we may have.
Does that cover, yeah.
What authority, not what should we do, but what authority do we have?
Exactly, exactly.
Right.
Okay, yeah. What authority do we have?
Yeah.
Which I think you're already asking.
Yeah.
Mr.?
No, I just had a question to ask you. Have you spoken with the superintendent to discuss about the retreat in the board and the superintendent? Because he, he mentioned that he would like to have one.
Yeah, but I don't see, I mean, what exactly would that entail, you know?
Well, you know, every superintendent, new superintendent came in, he did have a retreat, and there's some issues.
One of the board members, here.
There's some.
This isn't on the agenda.
Yeah, we're not.
I'm not saying it's on the agenda, I'm just asking.
Well, we shouldn't then talk about it right now. I agree. So, what we can do is if you, if, if you are, have thoughts about this topic, why don't you submit them to the officers and then we can open air.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted, before we break, I just want to make sure I have this correct. We're going to take this list, the officers, and we're going to come up with three things as a starting point to shorten our, our meetings. Is that what everyone wants us to do?
All right, Mr. Dowling?
I have one suggestion from Mrs. Cartlich. It's to clarify with the Attorney General whether the statute was written for appointed trustees or elected trustees on this notion of nullifying elections.
Removal, yes.
You need a removal, right?
There's, all right, there's statute that says trustees can remove members for cause. Correct? All right. Was that statute written for appointed trustees or elected trustees?
That statute enacted for appointed or elected trustees.
Right.
Elected trustees can only be removed by the governor. Simple as that.
Is that her?
I don't, I would respectfully disagree, I think, having read about, read about it. Okay.
I'll make a motion now, will you adjourn?
Second, all in favor? Uh-huh. Adjourned.